...create and inspire art. The Red Cat, which stands for Roy and Edna Disney Cow Arts Theater, is located at 631 West Second Street downtown. For ticket prices and other dates, go to redcat.org. And on Sunday, January 19th, from noon to 5:00 PM, the California African American Museum will celebrate the legacies of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Nelson Mandela. View film screenings of Dr. King's speeches and Nelson Mandela's speech made during his appearance at the Los Angeles Coliseum in 1990. Experience music, theater, and dance performances that represent our city's diverse communities. CAAM is located at 600 State Drive, Exposition Park. For more information, visit caamuseum.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. And there was probably no one who knew more about things to do in and around California than TV host Hughl Hauser. One year after his death, fans gathered together again to celebrate the life of the man who brought a touch of California gold to all the people and places he covered. Anna Marcos has more.
We're gonna do what Hughl wants us to do. He's gonna say, "Look at that beautiful California gold and that sunset."
Fans at the Griffith Observatory marked the first anniversary of Hughl Hauser's death by gazing at the sunset and holding hands. Hauser was loved by California viewers for his PBS show California's Gold, which focused on California's landmarks, towns, cities, customs, and yes, its parks.
You know, he gets excited about stuff?
Yeah.
It just gets you excited to go see it. I don't know.
Well, and also, he was really personable and just human with everybody.
We watched him from the very beginning, and we wondered, "Who is this guy that came from Tennessee that has such a gift of gab?" And anyone that he interviewed was just as drawn to him, and he could get anyone to talk about anything. And we used to go to the restaurants that he went to.
He would make you feel excited about finding a shell on the ocean, anything he saw.
Councilmember Tom Labonge, who was a friend of Hauser's, led the memorial celebration, showing pictures of the late TV host when he visited the Griffith Observatory in 2001 and when he hiked to the top of Mount Hollywood in 1984. Labonge even demonstrated one of the fascinating details that Hauser himself might have pointed out in one of his shows.
On December 22nd, the sun set on that line there where the council member is toward the Pacific Ocean. And at the equinox in March, where the council member is now, the sun will set directly to the west. And then in the summer, on June 21st, the summer will set on that line there.
Good job.
But most of all, Hughl Hauser was down home, the kind of man local hot dogs are named after.
I just actually, sort of in his memory over the weekend, went and had a Hughl dog at Pink's. Two hot dogs, chili and cheese.
Hauser died in January of last year at the age of 67 after a struggle with cancer. But his memory and all his visions of California's gold live on. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
While he was alive, Hauser donated all episodes of California's Gold and all his other public television shows to Chapman University to be archived and made available to the public. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
They don't fly or bend steel or ride off into the sunset. They simply volunteer to look after someone else's health by providing comfort, lending a hand, or simply keeping us on track. Everyone's health needs a hero. Who will you look out for?
Find out how you can participate in improving our health. Visit iparticipate.org.
Hi, I'm Craig Erwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Erwin, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.
It's 10 o'clock in Los Angeles. Good morning, everyone. This is Tuesday, the 14th of January 2014. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Corretts, Corian, Labonge, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Weston, Timmers, President of Quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Bonin moves. Mr. Buscaino seconds.
Nexus committed to resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonin moves, and Mr. Corretts seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Ask you to all rise. I'd like to ask Mr. Weezer to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. All rise.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Please put your hands over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Next item.
Mr. President, before we run through the agenda, there's a request to continue Item 1H to January 21st and Item 7 to February 4th. Also, the Department of Building and Safety reports that the lien amount for Item 1G should be reduced to $1,792.31 due to partial payment.
Any objection? So ordered. Next.
Items 1 and 2 are items for which, notice for public hearing.
All right, on those items, then we'll hold that. Items 1 and 2, we'll call special. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
For item, there are cards on Item 1, but Item 2 may be voted on.
All right, Item 2 will be voted on later. Do we do it now, or do we get them all lined up?
You can vote on Item 2 right now.
Let's, on Item 2, members, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes, so ordered. Next item.
Items 3 through 15 are items which public hearings have been held.
3 through 15. Any special 3 through 15, members? Mr. Corretts.
I'd like to call Item 15 special.
Say it again.
Item 15.
Item 15 special for Mr. Corretts. Any other specials, members? Okay, Item 15 special. Okay, see no other specials on the balance. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
So ordered. Next items.
Items 16 through 30 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
19, 20, and 22 are specials for me, but 10 votes you need is for consideration. So let's open for consideration. And close the roll for consideration. Okay, those matters are before me.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, very good. Excuse me, thank you. All right, now, Patrice, what do we have right now, Madam Clerk?
There are cards, in that section, there are cards on Items 16, 18, 21, and 24.
Okay, and then specials, Mr. Englander?
Yes, I believe you already called 19 and 20, so I'd like to call 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27.
Very good, very good. Mr. Englander?
Eighteen, if we can.
Eighteen.
From Mr. Sadio.
From Mr. Sadio, very good. Any other specials, members? No other specials on the balance. Can we open the roll on that, Patrice?
Yes.
Open the roll on the balance, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
On the supplemental agenda, Items 31 through 33 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
All right, let's open the roll for consideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
So ordered. Now, we're in before us. On these issues, Madam Clerk.
There are cards on all three items.
All three items, so we'll have to set those aside as special.
And just for the record, for Item 33, the account number should be 6010 instead of 2090.
All right, we have that corrected. Very good. So ordered. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, that takes counsel to presentations or items called special?
Well, let's do presentations right now. It's a very special day that we have right here, and I'm looking for Mr. Englander. Are you ready for your presentations, Mr. Englander, on a very special day? One minute, as we could, right there, as we do. We're just gonna do Item 1 real quick. Madam Clerk, call Item 1.
Item 1, cause push it for cards.
Minute 1 of 5 minutes. Holly, John Walsh at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, or just go to J. Walsh Confidential. This is Concerns, my favorite item, nuisance abatement. Now, when we say nuisance, we're not talking about the city council. We're talking about general nuisances that we, who are homeowners or renters, face. Here in LA, you can be fined for a nuisance. Remember, I'm here to explain what's happening up here, because they don't. Okay, this is $6,000. Now, again and again, I've said, "I'm not interested in the address. I want to know who the owner is, who is responsible for the nuisance," and they don't put the names up there, because many of them are campaign contributors. $6,000. $12,000 at South Calzona Street. One minute, HollywoodHighlands.org. Venceremos! Next public speaker, Sean Murphy from North Hollywood, California.
Yes, this item is not really good. I'm against it.
All right, that completes public comment. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. In fact, Mr. Labonge, I believe you have a presentation. Would you like to begin with your presentation? Okay, Mr. Labonge, the floor is yours.
Good to see you. Good to see you all. Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council on this day. I'm gonna ask some very special people to come up here. It's Korean-American Day here in Los Angeles. And what is great is about our city is the diversity and the history that has taken place for all to come here. Over 100 years ago, Korean-Americans, Koreans came from Korea to America and had their impact on life here in this great country. And I remember in doing some of my history, I believe it was a shopkeeper at Jefferson in Vermont, a little community market was that first Korean business. And as it grew and inspired, also with the great contribution of faith-based organizations and institutions that people believed in, they moved in the Olympic corridor, an Olympic corridor, which is named after our '32 Olympics, Olympic Boulevard, became the dominance of Koreatown. And then as greater success took place, you see the dominance of Koreatown and what is the traditional Wilshire Center area, and the transformation, and the nightlife, and the community that is there. The Korean-Americans have had a great impact on all of us in Los Angeles in such a great way, and now even the greatest transformation. I was watching CNN, and the guy who goes around the world and discovers things, he came to Koreatown and he found the Koji food truck, and he was all excited about the life of Los Angeles and the impact of Korean-Americans. I'm here today to cite this very special commendation on this day, to salute this day. And it is so important that we know that all people have their day. Every day is everyone's day. But when we recognize some group or organization, I'm proud on the 17th of March, they recognized the Irish, but I'm absolutely proud on this day we represent and salute the Korean-Americans. It is exciting to know of the work of the Korean-American community. Los Angeles and its adjacent cities are home to more than 700,000 Korean-Americans, the largest concentration of Koreans outside of the Korean Peninsula. In this quarter century, young Koreans have joined the mainstream and began to make significant contributions in the field of finance, technology, medicine, education, arts, media, government, as well as many other areas. And as the community enters the new era and creates new history, we must still, in an upcoming generations, properly appreciate the courage and values of your ancestors, those who went before with their deep sense of roots and the pride of their own culture and heritage, so that it may better contribute to our nation in a rich way. And I'm so further pleased that one of the best stories of the year last year was the dedication to the new Sammy Lee Elementary School in Mr. O'Farrell's district, White by Virgil Middle School. And that Sammy Lee, the great graduate of Franklin High School, was a 1948 gold medal winner in diving at the London Games. And that Sammy Lee is good and healthy and safe, and he's our hero. And Mr. Weston, as President of the council, saw it forthright and named the Quarter of Olympic Enormity after Dr. Sammy Lee, the great Olympian. All this contribution is so well, and I'm just here to salute each and every one of you. And I want to call on the President right now. Mr. Park on Sangwon Park, or send on, ask that you would speak at this point, and then you're gonna speak afterwards, as we got it going, right? Correct, all the way?
He is the President of Los Angeles.
I know, here we go. You please speak first, and then do the help me get through, as we do recognize.
Happy New Year, Honorable President of Los Angeles Council, Mr. Howard Weston and Mr. Tom Labonge. Let me read the President's message from White House. Mr. President Barack Obama remitted a congratulatory message for the 2014 Korean-American Day. I'm sending greetings to all those observing Korean-American Day. For generations, Korean-Americans have helped shape the United States, developing and defending the land we love. Often in the face of hardship and discrimination, Korean-Americans have persevered to build a better life for their children and for all Americans. Each year of Korean-American Day, we remember the first Koreans who came to America's show and celebrated the contributions made by the Korean-American community in the years since. And we take this special opportunity to reflect on the many Korean-Americans who are writing the next great chapter of America's story as athletes and artists and public servants and entrepreneurs, and as members of United States Armed Forces. Last year marked the 60th anniversary of the United States Republic of Korea Alliance, and Korean-Americans remain a symbol of the deep bonds, common values, and shared dreams of our two great nations. In honoring the heritage of Korean-Americans, let us, we commit to ensuring America remains a land of optimism and opportunity for generations to come. I hope you take pride in the special place the Korean-American community holds in our nation's rich culture, and I wish you all the best. Barack Obama, thank you.
I'd like to have Karen Lee of the Korean-American Federation say a few words.
Hi, good morning and Happy New Year. I'm Karen Lee, representing the Korean-American community, and it is a great honor and privilege for me to speak here today. First, I would like to thank Honorable President Weston of Los Angeles City Council and distinguished Los Angeles City Council members for supporting us annually in celebrating Korean-American Day. Korean-American Day was established 11 years ago as a day to commemorate the 100th year of Korean immigration to the United States, as well as their contributions to society. So as President Park just read, President Obama recognizes Korean-Americans' contribution to the United States in this congratulatory message, which I quote, "For generations, Korean-Americans have helped shape the United States, developing and defending the land we love. Often in the face of hardship and discrimination, Korean-Americans have persevered to build a better life for their children and for all Americans. As the previous generations have done before us, we pledge to actively volunteer in society, collaborate with others, and give our utmost support for the betterment of the United States. Thus, I hope this day not only remains a day of commemoration for Koreans, but serves as a basis for Americans to remember our forefathers and their contributions for our nation's success, as well as an opportunity to reflect on our shortcomings so that we may be a model example for future generations. Finally, through our collaboration, I hope Korean-American Day may be a shared experience for all. Thank you."
Karen, thank you very, very much. I just wanted to say, I saw Mr. Englander smile a minute ago, because we used to argue who had the highest number of Koreans in the district, and with redistricting, Mr. Englander, his great Chief of Staff, John Lee, but no one beats Debbie Kim and the great Director of Legislations and work she does. All the staff, you're the Korean-American staff that's here. G D Men and everyone, all of them. Mr. President, I know you want to be down here, but you got to run the show up there. This is very special. I'm proud of the people, of the Korean-American community. Give them a big hand. Come, Samida! Chingu!
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. I would like to ask for Mr. Englander to begin making his way to the center aisle. Mr. Englander will have our next presentation. Mitchell, the floor is yours.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. The Northridge earthquake, if I can wait for it to quiet down a little in here.
Yeah, why don't we just wait a moment?
It's too important.
And I concur. Okay, now, we're gonna start. Mr. Englander.
The Northridge earthquake struck on Monday, January 17th, 1994, at 4:31 AM. The 6.7 magnitude shook the earth violently for over 20 seconds, and many of us can recount stories of being shaken out of bed, running out of the house barefoot, fighting debris and broken glass strewn across the floor. The Northridge earthquake killed 57 people, attributed to 72 deaths, injured 11,000 more, and left 22,000 people homeless, damaging over 114,000 residential and commercial structures. It was one of the most destructive disasters in U.S. history, with direct estimated losses totaling nearly $42 billion. Despite the devastation, the Northridge earthquake is also a story of resilience and survival. Stories of neighbors helping neighbors camping out together on their front lawns for days on end, sharing food, tools, and comfort as they picked up the pieces. The Northridge earthquake is also a story of collaboration and a model of expedient intergovernmental coordination. Senator Dianne Feinstein worked with Councilman Hal Bernson of the 12th District to secure billions of dollars in disaster relief. FEMA opened up its service centers and immediately started handing out emergency relief checks to residents affected by the earthquake. These are just a few of the examples of how dozens of agencies from all levels of government, from the city, county, and state and federal, came together to help the recovery efforts. I've got several people that I want to recognize and organizations before we get into some of the other policy issues and discussions before us today. As we've seen from the Northridge earthquake, small businesses are often the hardest hit because they lack cash flow, seldom carry insurance, and business owners are double victims because they generally suffer both personal and business losses. During the Northridge earthquake, it was estimated that $6.5 billion was lost due to business interruptions, in which $5.5 billion was in the Northridge region alone. I want to recognize Greg Corian from the Valley Economic Alliance. And kick-started by a grant from the U.S. Commercial Service, the Valley Economic Alliance was formed by civic and business leaders throughout the San Fernando Valley in response to the Northridge earthquake. Through their hard work and collaborative efforts with local investors, strategic partners, trade associations, and industry experts, the Valley Economic Alliance has helped thousands of residents and businesses recover and has helped the San Fernando Valley region thrive. If we can put our hands together for the Valley Economic Alliance, I want to thank you and ask you to say a few words. I've got... I've got a certificate of appreciation to the Valley Economic Alliance as well, for all the years, their steadfast commitment to helping the region.
Thank you, Mitch. Yeah, I know, it was January 17, 1994, and I just moved here from Connecticut via Detroit, Michigan, and I remember that morning, I was sleeping with my cousin, and we never felt the ground shake so hard, and it just shows you how inexperienced people are in this community. That day, we were listening to radio early in the morning, and the radio station said, whatever you're doing, please do not light candles. And my cousin and I were going all over the place blowing out our candles, and it just shows you, that moment in time, all the lives that were lost, the leadership that came through that rubble. We've arisen like the phoenix here in Los Angeles. We're growing as a community. We at the Valley Economic Alliance invite the entire community on January 17 at CSUN Cal State Northridge. We have over 80 organizations together, from Chambers of Commerce to the Black Business Association, the Armenian Chamber of Commerce, Vic, BizFed, Valley Economic Development Corporation, the American Red Cross, the list goes on. We're honoring Governor Pete Wilson that morning, we're honoring Mayor Riordan at that time, we're also honoring, recognizing the work that President Bill Clinton played that time. We're also honoring the Dillinger's, both Dillinger's, the husband and wife that played a role. Dick Andrews, who played a role with the government, with the state of California. This is an opportunity for us to show the nation how Los Angeles can withstand a major earthquake and still shine, and that's what CSUN's goal is, to shine. You know, I know my sister has a business in Atwater Village, and Alferro's here today, and he remembers my sister Diane Serafino had Wolf Dog Boutique, and he looked at the infrastructure what's built in this nation, so many cultures together to help us grow. As we just heard recently, with the state of Korea giving that recognition, it just shows how we're one nation, we have many gifts here in this community. So I'd like to thank Mitch and his leadership, and Paul Krikorian and Blumenthal to come and support us, and Labange, but Mitch especially, we in the Valley need your help, and our families need your help, and we thank you for your leadership and everything you're doing, and come see us and support us on January 17, 2014 at CSUN. God bless.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Councilmember Labange Buscagno to join me up here as well. Following the 1985 Mexico City earthquake, Assistant Chief Frank Borden, now retired after 36 years of service with the Los Angeles Fire Department, developed the idea for disaster preparedness program to train civilian volunteers to assist emergency service personnel during large-scale disasters. In 1986, Councilmember Hal Bernson, in partnership with the Los Angeles Fire Department, established a pilot program to train civilian volunteers to work as adjunct, to work in an adjunct to the professional public safety force. The establishment of the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, was born, or as we often recognize them by their green helmets and vests, provide invaluable during, provided invaluable service during the Northridge earthquake, where CERT volunteers extinguished small fires, turned off gas, performed light search and rescue, and rendered first aid to their neighbors. In fact, the CERT program was so successful, many other cities and agencies began to emulate LAFD's innovative program, including FEMA. Councilmember Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. I am pleased to present to you an incredible program. We hear about CERT, but we also found a void in using teenagers to be a part of that program. And in February of 2013, the South Los Angeles Teen CERT Collaborative, please welcome them, give them a round of applause. An incredible program. This collaborative implemented the first teen CERT training program in South Los Angeles. The objectives of the Teen CERT Training Program is to build community resiliency in the Watts community of South Los Angeles, targeting youths, youth, and the South L.A. Watts Teen CERT Program was envisioned, planned, and implemented by the following partners: the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Center for Faith-Based and Neighborhood Partnerships, FEMA, my office, City of Los Angeles Fire Department, the Housing Authority, the Police Department, Southeast Cadet Program, the L.A. County Department of Public Health, Service Planning Area 6, Women of Imperial Courts, the Watts Gang Task Force, Council on Pakistan American Affairs, the 7-Eleven Corporation, and the American Red Cross. The CERT program is a viable mechanism to ensure that communities are able to prepare for, respond to, recover from, and mitigate future impacts from natural and man-made hazards. Anecdotal information from both city and county CERT programs indicate that there are fewer CERT-trained individuals in South L.A. despite a significant community interest. Now, the South L.A. Teen CERT Program was an opportunity to model how CERT training can increase preparedness and resilience in vulnerable communities within the city, county, and nationally. It was, it also serves to highlight the importance of collaboration across governmental, community, and private agencies in order to achieve successful community development. Training modules include earthquake awareness, disaster fire suppression techniques, disaster medical operations, team organization and disaster psychology, and terrorism and homeland defense. Additionally, skill-building activities included American Red Cross Community CPR and First Aid Certification Course was facilitated on May 11 of last year. Now, 27 students completed the training and received certificates and commendations at the Teen CERT graduation ceremony on April 20, 2013. Over 100 people were in attendance, joining me at the time at this presentation, with Jackie Lacy, the county district attorney, Ron Fisher, representing Supervisor Mark Burley-Thomas's office, Dr. Jana Scott, the Homeland Security and Center of the White House Office, Faith-Based and Neighborhood Partnerships, Dr. Jan King, area health officer for Weston at South L.A., and Dr. Alonzo Plou, Director of the L.A. County Department of Public Health. The teens now have the skills and ability to organize a CERT team, join an existing one in their neighborhood, and increase the resilience of their communities against the impacts. And as a result of this initiative, in September 2013, the South Los Angeles Teen CERT Collaborative was invited and traveled to the White House to receive the John Solomon Whole Community Preparedness Award, the highest national award given for preparedness. Let's give them a round of applause. And President Obama awarded them with the medal. Come on up, let's just see the beautiful medal here. Take a look. And traveling with them was my Field Deputy John Jones III, and we have a teen CERT member right here. Let's give him a round of applause. Introduce yourself.
Name is Gregory.
Gregory Jones.
Say it again, say it again.
Gregory Jones.
All right. Gregory Jones. Give him a round of applause, one of our teen CERT members. And he's joining the United States Army, ladies and gentlemen. God bless you. So we have the whole collaborative with us, and we'll be presenting them certificates in the back, and I'll turn it back over to my colleague, Mr. Englander, and thank you so much for your leadership and commitment in raising the awareness. Thank you, Mr. Englander.
Great, thank you very much. All right, a true local hero. Appreciate that. Thank you. The San Fernando Valley is the epicenter of disaster, and as a Councilmember of the 12th District, I'm proud to say that the first CERT team was 30 members from the Devonshire Division Neighborhood Watch Group to help those who can't help themselves in a major disaster. The partnership between the Los Angeles Fire Department and the Los Angeles Police Department continues. As 150 senior lead officers have now been CERT certified, we'll now be able to train the trainer, training their local neighborhood watch groups, helping communities to be more self-sufficient. And as many of my colleagues have witnessed in their neighborhoods, these volunteers are our heroes. And I turn it over to one of those colleagues, Tom Labange.
You know, I wanted to make a statement there, Mr. Englander, and I was out aside the room, but we salute those who went before us. Hal Bernson, give him a big hand for his work on preparedness. Greg Smith, a big hand for preparedness, and you as a deputy, and I tell you, as Avak looks on back behind the shadows of the column, the key is our staff's members, to all of us, appoint someone to be the liaison to help these great volunteers of Los Angeles. Community Emergency Response Teams are going to be there before. If all the epicenter is in the valley, they'll be in the valley. All the, unfortunately, under 1,000 firefighters, we need more firefighters, Mr. Fuentes, many more. We have to have them on duty all the time. That being said, it's the Community Emergency Response Team, because having actively been involved in 1994 here in this building and out in the community 63 days straight, I personally worked, I know you did too, and our departments, recreation parks in charge of housing, the parks were transformed to housing villages, building and safety, working around the clock, planning, all these other operations, our airports, our port of Los Angeles, and water and power, I want to give a big shout out to, because less than three days, we had power throughout the city. Give them a shout out back, that's because we had transitioned it around. So Mitch, I want to thank you, it's a team effort. It goes back to those who went before us, and we continue, because there will be another quake, there hasn't been one since last century. Can you believe that, Mitchell Ferrell? You know, boom, but it's going to come, and we've got to be prepared. Hear it for preparedness. Thank you, Mitchell Ferrell.
Mr. Englander.
The other, the other one, yeah, it's all good. Well, I know, thank you, Mitchell Ferrell, as well. We're all in this together. With that, and speaking of colleagues, while he's one of the newer members of the City Council, he's no stranger to government and what he's done on the state level as well, and bringing that expertise here in the City Hall, my partner, Bob Lumen.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Englander, for inviting me to be part of this presentation and the very important program that's key to our survival, the Los Angeles Department's Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT. 20 years ago, as we've been talking about, Southern California was rocked by the Northridge earthquake that stands as the costliest natural disaster in our history. The Northridge earthquake was actually, a lot of people don't realize, this was centered in Reseda, which happens to be in my district. And freeways and hospitals and schools were closed, ruptured gas lines sparked hundreds of fires, power was unavailable. The human cost was enormous, 57 deaths, over 5,000 people injured, thousands of hospitalizations. No one who lived through it will ever forget it. Our collective memory, it's been seared into our collective memory. Now, for me, you know, people say that it was felt as far as Las Vegas when it happened. I can tell you, it was felt as far as Washington, D.C., because that's where I was when the earthquake hit. I was working for Congressman Howard Berman at the time, and I got a call from a friend of mine at CNN telling me that the earthquake had just hit our district, and I braved a snowstorm to get to the Capitol and worked with Congressman to get over $14 billion worth of aid, and it took several days and intense fighting to decide about offsets, and then for the next year and a half, my life was changed by that earthquake, because, for one thing, our district office was destroyed, we had to coordinate things using a military satellite phone, we didn't have the cell phone capacity we had now, and then I spent time working with SBA and FEMA, and it wasn't just Katrina FEMA, it was a really good FEMA back then, with James Lee Witt and other folks who really helped make things happen. And we worked not only to distribute food and water in the crisis right away, according to that from D.C., but we worked to change the algorithm so we could keep Kaiser Hospital, and worked with the good people in the city who really rose to an occasion. I mean, the city workers were fantastic at that time. Now, the extreme price conditions overwhelmed the first responders as good as they were, and that's where this CERT program comes in, because the community came together to meet the challenges, and we need to, as a city, prepare ourselves for the community to be coming together. It's one of the reasons, because the earthquake was so seared in my memory, the first thing I did as an elected official, as an Assembly Member, was to establish an emergency preparedness task force, and that team came together, and it still, we're running it as a community action team, and the first thing they said was, we want to have more CERT training. And so in my district, we have this Valley V-Prep Task Force, and we work, and Stacey Gurlik, who's here, and other folks who are here, are part of that team, and we've worked to increase the number of CERT volunteers. It's an amazing program, from the Fire Department, goes back to 1986. As has been mentioned, it's not a question of if, it's a question of when. So I'm here to join, applaud, the LAFD's CERT program that saved lives, encourage anyone who can hear my voice to look into getting, becoming CERT-trained yourself, because at the end of the day, as good as our first responders are, and as hopefully good as all of our government will be in helping, it's going to be the neighbors and friends who are responding, it's going to be you who are hearing my voice, who are helping each other, and the CERT program helps make that happen. So thank you for allowing me to be part of this.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. And I also want to recognize the Los Angeles Fire Department's Disaster Preparedness Division. This small team of five runs the CERT program, Teen CERT program, disaster awareness course, My Safe L.A., urban search and rescue, and many more. They're the ones responsible for educating and training the community on how to prepare and protect citizens during an emergency. And now, with over 50,000 CERT, 50,000 CERT-trained volunteers citywide, it is my distinct honor to recognize the Community Emergency Response Teams for their commitment to ensuring our neighborhoods are more prepared, and for their dedication to assisting our public safety personnel. Before we present the certificate to the father of CERT, Chief Frank Borden, I also want to recognize Lucy Veloski, if I could, for one second. Come here, Lucy. Lucy was, we met on the campaign trail, she was one of my opponents, and she came to me and said, after the election, I have a great idea, now that you won, let's work together to implement my vision and idea. I want to have an OK Help sign, I want to have an OK Help sign in every single home in Los Angeles. This weekend, on Sunday, we delivered 20,000 of these to the northwest San Fernando Valley, and this was Lucy's vision. We worked together on this, we came up with the language, we worked with the Red Cross, with the Fire Department, with all our disaster preparedness partners, in preparing a brochure that's being handed out to all of you called Aftershock. We all tell people what to do before an earthquake, how to prepare, what you should stock, and a lot of people don't do that. So the question becomes right after, what do you do? What do you do after the fact? How do you drink water and make water drinkable from a pool? How do you go to the back of the tank of the toilet to retrieve drinking water? Those things that people don't think about. And so, the other thing is, we know with certainty, we're not going to have enough emergency personnel, we're not going to have enough CERT-trained individuals and leaders like Lucy and all of her partners throughout the city. So, to quickly go through a neighborhood, we want people to put these in their window and to say if they're OK, or if they need aid. And so thank you very much for your vision and leadership on this as well, on this partnership. Let's give Lucy a round of applause. Lucy is OK. With that, I'd like to bring up Frank Borden, the father, the creator of CERT, an international program now, and thank him and ask him to say a couple of words as well.
Thank you very much.
Frank Borden.
Thank you all. It's hard to describe my feelings today. This is the first time, I think, really, that the CERT program has received this kind of, an award, if you will, in recognition from the City Council. I know, talked about it many times. I'm honored to be here today and take part in the celebration, and with our great CERT team volunteers. It was because of city leaders like yourselves that I was able, I've given the opportunity, I guess, to develop the program, Mayor Bradley and Councilman Bernson, my Far Chief Don Manning. Let me travel a little bit and go to Japan and observe their preparedness, and actually go to the Mexico City earthquake and make observations there about how people respond to disasters, and with that, came back with these ideas and developed a concept paper, if you will. The Woody earthquake in '87 was really the stimulus that started the whole program, the City Council. It was amazing, if you think about this, I went from an assignment in the field to, in one month, to a brand-new disaster preparedness division, thanks to the support of the mayor and council of the city at the time, because they saw the value of this program. And now, the value of the program is beyond belief. disaster preparedness division, thanks to the support of the mayor and council of the city at the time, because they saw the value of this program. And now, the value of the program is beyond belief. It really is. These people in your city, our city, I live in the city, I enjoy living here, I was born here. These, I'm a Pedro guy. Anyway, the people that you have out there, these volunteers, and as Councilman Englander mentioned, you too could take this program. Let me just mention one thing, really the kickstart of the program, Councilman Bernson, we had the program in his district, the pilot program, everybody liked it, it was wonderful, that we showed them off in different events and everything, but what really got it kickstarted beside the earthquake was the fact that we did a training program for the mayor and council staff. We had an exercise right here, right here in the city hall lawn, and the mayor and council staff said, this is great, this program ought to be expanded. And I appreciate what you have done today, Councilmen, and Councilman Labange, to promote the program with you because our instructors are here waiting. You have to let your people, your constituents know the program is available and have them come out. I was really pleased to hear about the Teen CERT program and this young man who is going to go in the Army, and believe me, those skills will last your entire life. When you learn how to do these things, you don't have to wait for the disaster, you can use the skills anytime, anywhere, anyplace. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you.
I would like to ask, wait, Frank, come up here for one second. If you think about our true heroes in Los Angeles, if you, you know, we say our firefighters, our police officers, our first responders are definitely and absolutely without question our heroes. You think about those that stand out from that crowd, those leaders that create programs that are life-changing, altering programs, like what Frank has done, that without question has already saved lives, continues to save lives and forever will save lives and property. He deserves an incredible honor and recognition and a standing ovation from this body for what he has done to change Los Angeles forever and to save lives, as well as the people and the men and women behind him that dedicate their lives as well. So Frank.
Councilman Labange wanted me to introduce you. My wife works for the city, she works for the Library Department, Library Commission. Her name's Raquel. Thanks for being here.
Executive Director, good job, Raquel.
So on behalf of the city, we give you a proclamation for CERT, Community Emergency Response Team, and all signed by all of us as well, as a token of our appreciation for everything that you've done for us. God bless you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. I may share this, but not that you can't awaken.
Turn the picture, Mitch.
Wow. That is beautiful. Thank you so much.
We're going to go in the back and take group photos as well. Absolutely.
Somebody got my wallet? No.
No, I've got one more.
Thank you, Councilman, for what you said.
One more, thank you very much. Two more, but I'm going to split them up. I'll do one now and one later. We've got a pretty remarkable hero, actually, that joined us today. You can't imagine what it must be like unless you were there. You can't imagine waking up to the horror of not knowing exactly what was happening at 4:31 in the morning. You can't imagine the first thoughts in your mind racing through, what are you going to do? You have to check on your family, your loved ones, and that's not, that's if you're not trapped under rubble. Imagine being asleep in a fire station as the battalion chief for the area. Imagine waking up with that. The first 24 hours following the Northridge earthquake, the Los Angeles Fire Department had responded to over 2,200 incidents in less than a day. To put that into perspective, that's nearly three times the daily average, the men and women working around the clock to save lives and properties all over the city. Our battalion chief, Larry Schneider, was that individual who was in charge at the time of the quake. Although there are many heroes to recognize for their selfless actions during the Northridge earthquake, I want to recognize one individual in particular. When the Northridge earthquake hit, Battalion Chief Schneider and 50 firefighters had to work in total darkness, crawling on their hands, on their knees, struggling to open fire engine doors by hand. With so much going on, fires, buildings and freeways collapsing, downed power lines and broken water mains, Chief Schneider pieced together radio fragments. He personally pieced together radio fragments to reestablish communication, extinguished fires without sufficient pressurized water, and rescued hundreds of residents trapped under rubble. With over 63 years of firefighting experience, Chief Schneider demonstrated great courage, leadership and discipline, and it is my distinct honor, it is our honor, to present a certificate in recognition to Battalion Chief Larry Schneider.
And I want to wish the members that were assigned to Battalion 15 on January 17th could be here. They're the ones that really should be here. All I can say and what I really learned is we've got to reopen the 18 fire companies that have been recently closed. Particularly, if we listen to the experts on earthquakes, that the next one's going to be bigger and it's inevitable, we're going to have one. So we've got to be prepared. But with that, I want to thank you for the honor of this, and it is definitely an honor. Thank you very much. 63 years firefighter, longest-serving firefighter in Los Angeles history, his sons at both four. Chief Schneider, give him a hand. Good job. Very good. Mr. Englander's close, but I remarked, Mr. President, that I wanted to say, Mayor Reardon at the time, who drove himself from his home in West Los Angeles to Wilshire Station in a sweatshirt, we all kidded him when we worked for him because he really knew he didn't know how to drive, but he went into Wilshire Station, got a police officer and began the active reconstruction, which took a team effort. I just want to remember and give a handout for Mayor Richard Reardon at the time and the work that he and his staff did.
To close quickly, and I'll be back up for a special presentation later, I just wanted to thank again everyone. I was, I was reading the story about Chief Schneider and what he experienced, and I encourage and urge all of you to read that story. It was actually printed on the front page of the Daily News yesterday. And the horror, and you can't imagine being a firefighter, driving down the street as people are chasing you, chasing the fire truck because, and shouting for help because they have loved ones trapped, and they're trying to figure out in the dark hours as the glow of all the fires in the sky is illuminated throughout the valley and the dust and the cloud from all that dust, from all the rubble and the gas and the smell of gas, what they're experiencing while they're trying to drive around with limited resources and no communication and no water pressure, and he's in charge of that entire battalion, what he experienced is just a fraction of what so many others went through as well. So if we can give all of our first responders, our community activists, our trained CERT providers and
Mr. Englander, I have a member.
Another final round of applause.
I do have a member on the queue, Mr. Sadea.
Thank you.
I didn't want to cut you off in that very, very illuminating visual closing, but I was inspired by Tom. I think it's important, and I appreciate what you're doing, because it's important for us to remember all those moments, and none of us will forget, the chaos that was created, but also the coming together of the entire community. And I think that's what's really important. We must remember, as was just stated by Mr. Snyder, the importance of the infrastructure that has to be in place and that we flirt with disaster every day, that we will make budget decisions and policy decisions, that we are flirting with disaster because we know that these, some of these things are inevitable. And so the question is, will we be prepared? And that's only a decision and a choice and an answer that we can make. And so we have to keep that in mind. But I didn't want the moment to pass, Mr. President. You were at the county, I was at, with SIU, everybody came together. Dick Reardon got up as he did in the morning, Governor Wilson, Caltrans, we built a freeway in weeks. The building trades, the unions, the service employees, your predecessor, Richard Alacron, a young council member at the time, we made a call to him and we took buses, buses of individual volunteers from the city and the county of Los Angeles out to the valley under the direction of FEMA, which directed us to go house to house, tagging houses, right, working with them, going to all the healthcare delivery facilities in the region. It was an incredible time for the city and for this region, and it's a moment that must be remembered, but it also a moment that has to be respected. And we can only give respect and honor to it if we make the preparations and do the incredible program that you've taken from the leadership of your community and then embodied into a real program that we can implement and execute. So I wanted to applaud you for your leadership, Mitch, but I also think it's very important to remember how, on a nonpartisan basis, you think of it, Dick Reardon, Pete Wilson, President Clinton, the Los Angeles City Council, the Los Angeles City workforce, the Los Angeles County workforce, the County Board of Supervisors, everyone together, just thought it's important to mention.
Thank you. And Mr. Englander, back to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you once again, and thank you for that. And I would like to add to that, just in a final close, a lot of gratitude that needs to be given to Hal Bernson, who is known around here as Mr. Earthquake. He was talking about earthquake preparedness, earthquake safety, policies, initiatives, things like the CERT program, far before the Northridge earthquake, and continued that all the way to the day he left, in fact, continues talking about it to this day, has done a lot. And so I wanted to make sure that we recognize both Hal and Greg Smith for their efforts. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's give him one more round of applause. Mr. Coretts, are you, do you want to proceed or?
Yes.
So we'll wait for there to be room and maybe I'll, why don't we deal with one of the items I know you had concerns with? Was it item, you and Mr. Parks, I'm not sure. Item 15? You want to go to that?
Yeah.
So go right ahead. We're on item 15.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I've made no secret of what I think about fracking, acidizing and other high-pressure oil extraction methods. I have a lot of questions about its safety. And today, while we're especially focused on earthquake safety, I would note the U.S. Geological Survey has said that fracking has caused earthquakes in Ohio, Oklahoma, Texas and Kansas. And Kansas is one of the five states least likely to have earthquakes, and yet they had a swarm of earthquakes around injection wells. And so the question is, can we trust the state regulatory agency in charge of this to oversee this extreme oil extraction? I doubt it because they wouldn't help us shut down an oil well at University Park when people were having nosebleeds and headaches. It took our terrific city attorney to do that. Fracking also is a problem in terms of water because it uses millions of gallons of water, adds toxic chemicals, and then shoves it underground and creates a superfund site in essence. Why is that a good idea when California has its lowest snowpack in recorded history and LA City has its worst drought and least rainfall in recorded history? Shouldn't we put our water to better use and to make a few people very rich at the expense of our state's water supply? So despite the fact that this council asked that SB4 be strengthened back in September, it was actually substantially weakened and then signed by the governor. If fracking could be done safely, it would be covered by the State Drinking Water Act instead of exempted from it. I think we should have LA's voice heard loud and clear in rulemaking, and so I ask that we support Mr. Parks' motion, and we comment to the Department of Conservation and let them know about our concerns. And so I ask for an eye vote on it.
Mr. Bonin.
Mr. President, I also wanted to rise and support Mr. Parks' motion, and thank you and Mr. Coretts as well for the work you've been doing on fracking. I think it's particularly significant to take a stand and express our concern and our reservations and our opposition to fracking today. We've spent a considerable period of time today talking about the Northridge earthquake. And one of the thing that scares the heck out of me about fracking is we're drilling into the ground, and in areas where there have not been earthquakes, in Ohio, they're now having hundreds of small earthquakes. Fracking is a ridiculous thing to be considering in a seismically sensitive area like Los Angeles, so thanks to all of my colleagues for their leadership on this. I also ask for an eye vote here.
Mr. Parks to close. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to amend the report and just ask that we add to our report that when the state responds back to us, that they respond to both the CLA and the Bureau of Sanitation so that we make sure that both entities. And then the only other piece of this puzzle is that we have to work out how we're going to get this to the state by the 16th, so we should go forthwith. And then there's an added piece that we need to have a letter signed by the mayor and the president of council today on the fracking public comments. And so those are issues that we hope that we get resolved because the fracking guidelines are due today by 4 o'clock. So I just ask that we add to the report that we ask the state to respond to both the CLA and the Bureau of Sanitation, and that we also find, that we go forthwith on this item and that we get the fracking guidelines letter signed and out today.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this as amended. Let's, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Okay, Mr. Coretts, for your presentation, Mr. Labange, forthwith on that item. And item eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, thank you for letting us take the time at the beginning of today's council meeting to honor the life of Ariel Sharon, former Prime Minister of Israel, who passed away on Saturday. I'm joined today by the Israeli Consul General to Los Angeles, David Siegel, who you all know, who will also say a few words. Also here are Dylan Hosier and Marina Kozansky of the consulate, Jerry Levy of the Jewish Labor Committee, Joe Shushani, a leader from the Persian Jewish Committee, and other Jewish community leaders. From his day as a child working on his family farm, to serving in the Army in every major theater of combat from the time of statehood in 1948, to rising up the political ladder and eventually becoming his nation's prime minister, Ariel Sharon dedicated his life to the nation of Israel. Sharon served for over 30 years in the Israeli Defense Forces. He joined the Haganah at the age of 14, rose to the rank of Major General, and achieved fame for his leadership in the 1967 Six-Day War and the 1973 Yom Kippur War. He was the founder of the Likud Party and served in the Knesset and became Minister of Defense in 1981, later taking on other posts. He was elected prime minister in 2001 and served till 2006. In late 2005, Sharon resigned from the Likud Party and founded a new centrist party, Kadima. While his legacy is not without controversy, and I personally didn't agree with him on everything that he did, but in the end, his stalwart commitment to his nation and to peace were absolutely un- to peace were absolutely unshakable. Israeli President Shimon Peres described Prime Minister Sharon in this way. "He was one of Israel's great protectors and most important architects, who knew no fear and certainly never feared vision. He knew how to make difficult decisions and implement them. He was a brave soldier and a daring leader who loved his nation and his nation loved him." Now I'd like to invite Consul General David Siegel to say a few words.
I want to thank City Council for this moving tribute in memory of Israel's eleventh Prime Minister, Ariel Sharon. It is a testament to the abiding friendship between the people of the United States, the people of Los Angeles, and the people of Israel. As Councilmember Paul Coretts said, uh, Prime Minister Sharon was a member of the founding fathers of the modern state of Israel, a member of a great generation that created the state, fought for the state, and protected it in its early days. He was central in the great battles and was even wounded in nineteen forty-eight, uh, three years after Auschwitz was liberated. And the story of his life reflects the story of the life of the Jewish people and the state of Israel. From that time, he was instrumental in the Six-Day War. He was single-handedly responsible in the nineteen seventy-three war for stopping the incoming Egyptian military. He was also instrumental in overcoming the suicide bombings in the early two thousands, thereby conveying a message that democracies can indeed overcome terrorism. But he wasn't just a warrior and a farmer. He later became Prime Minister at the height of his political career in two thousand and one, and for five years, he steered Israel both against terrorism, but also in the pursuit of peace. He took extraordinarily bold steps in pulling out of the Gaza Strip, taking down Israeli communities, and moving out the military to enable the Palestinians to have a future homeland. Unfortunately, that area was taken over by Hamas and became a missile-launching site where thousands of rockets were fired at Israel as a result. We learn from that legacy the importance of being very, very careful in everything we do in the Middle East, searching for peace, striving for peace, but also insisting on the vital interests of Israel and on ironclad security guarantees to ensure that the day after the peace agreement is as secure as the day of the peace agreement. That legacy is also with us today as we pursue peace with the Palestinians and understand the threats that we face in the Middle East, both Israel and the West, vis-à-vis, and nuclear-armed Iran and other threats in the region. My last point, which relates to Los Angeles, is that Ariel Sharon always dreamed of developing the Negev, which is Israel's desert region. And today, we see the desert developing, becoming a major international hub of innovation on water, the environment, and technology. Parts of these areas will be named, uh, in his memory, uh, and that is a, a very, very appropriate legacy, uh, that he leaves us with today. So we thank you again very much for this moving tribute today.
I, I don't know if there are other council members that have...
Yes, Councilmember Bloomfield would like to make remarks as well.
I just wanted to, to say to the Consul General, I mean, I've worked with a lot of Consul Generals over the years on different capacities, and you really have, are, are doing an amazing job with the community here in Los Angeles, a, a great advocate for the state of Israel and the U.S.-Israel relationship. And I just, I just wanted to, to, to thank you, and, and I know I'm going to continue to work with you on a lot of different issues, so thank you for being here and all you do.
And, uh, Mr. Coretts, thank you for what you do and always keeping us informed. Consul General, I love you. God bless the state of Israel. God bless America. Mr. Coretts?
I, I would just ask that, uh, we observe a moment of silence in the memory of Ariel Sharon, if I might.
I'm going to ask you all to rise for a moment of silence, would you, for Mr. Sharon, Ariel Sharon. God bless the memory of all who went before us. Thank you very much. Madam, next item, I'd like to call on the Chief of Protocol for the Mayor of Los Angeles and the Director of our Sister City Program. That's Lynetta Marion from the Mayor Garcetti's office, and Camilla Blanch, Director of Sister Cities, with our very special guest here from our sister city of Bordeaux, France. Ms. Blanch, please.
Good morning, Mr. President and, uh, City Council Members. I am, well, I'm here with Lynetta Marion, Chief of Protocol for the Mayor's Office, and I'm honored to, um, be standing here with, um, guests and officials from the city of Bordeaux. Uh, we have Stephane Delu, and he is Deputy Mayor of Tourism for Bordeaux, France. Uh, we also have Louis de Coray, Executive Director of International Affairs, and Brigitte Prusel, Executive Director of Cultural Affairs for the city of Bordeaux. They, they are here with me today because, uh, Sister Cities of Los Angeles and Bordeaux celebrate a fifty-year anniversary this year, which is a milestone anniversary, and we have a kickoff to a year-long cultural exchange between Los Angeles and some of its famous arts institutions, and Bordeaux and some of its famous arts institutions. We will be bringing them here. So, uh, this happens at the L.A. Art Show on Wednesday, um, the fifteenth, at seven P.M., where we have, uh, special guests from, uh, Bordeaux and the city of, uh, L.A., and we'll, we showcasing some of the exhibits there.
Thank you very much. And Lynn, we thank you for your work as Chief of Protocol, the great job you do. We're quite an international city to have Bordeaux here. Official welcome on behalf of the City Council. Oui oui, oui oui!
I just want to say that I was received in Bordeaux in October, and I can tell you that they have rolled out the red carpet for Los Angeles. They are doing a cultural exchange in June where they will be celebrating their relationship with Los Angeles, as Camilla just said. I encourage all of you, if you're planning on holiday, try to, uh, make it there because it's going to be pretty spectacular. So, thank you, and I welcome Bordeaux to Los Angeles.
Oui oui, mercy and au revoir. Good to see you. Thank you. Ceci, please.
Mr. President, dear Tom, ladies and gentlemen, council members, it's a great pleasure and a great honor to be here in this beautiful and historical place of, uh, place of, uh, Los Angeles. It's also an honor and, uh, to be, to present to you. All the best regards from Mr. Alan Juppé, Mayor de Bordeaux and former Prime Minister. Thank you very much for this commemoration of this fifteenth century, fifteenth anniversary, sorry, of our training with great events. So I would like to mention the special cultural program we elaborate with the city of Los Angeles and between Bordeaux and Los Angeles with beautiful exhibitions in next June in Bordeaux. And also, thank you very much, Mr. President, to accept to be the guest of honor of the Bordeaux Wine Festival next June in Bordeaux. We are very happy to welcome all of you, uh, next June in, in Bordeaux for this event. I'll, as we are very pleased to be there in Los Angeles today for the L.A. Art Show. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And members in Bordeaux, they have a light rail system. Mr. Weezer, you got to go see it, so if you could do your Broadway, the technology's so important. And they have a car, not a streetcar named Desire, but a streetcar named Los Angeles. So, uh, give a big hand for Bordeaux. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item thirty-one and thirty-two, call special for cards.
Christopher Sutton on this item here, followed by Ellen Isaacs, followed by Juan Akala, followed by Wayne from Encino.
Good morning. My name is Christopher Sutton. I'm the attorney for the Weston Bonaventure Hotel. These two items relate to the sale of the Mangrove property in Little Tokyo, which is related to the Regional Connector. Uh, last night, there was a settlement conference that was concluded at seven o'clock. A settlement, uh, offer was received by the MTA on this project and will be considered by the MTA Board on the twenty-third at its meeting. And we have requested that our group and the financial district stakeholders be allowed time on that agenda to present the settlement offer to the MTA Board. MTA staff and attorneys have so far said that we will not be allowed to. We would urge the council to not consider these two items until the MTA Board has considered the settlement proposal that we have on the table, and will be before the MTA Board a week from Thursday. We believe that this item, the city of Los Angeles, is not receiving sufficient compensation for the property in Little Tokyo when compared to what the city of Monrovia received from MTA, uh, two years ago in a similar circumstance. We believe that the city should not approve it at this time because the document says that the property will not be taken possession of until sometime between March and June. MTA will not award the construction contract until March, and construction will not commence until July. In addition, this contract allows MTA to delay the delivery of money to the city until the last day of June, and so that there is no urgency to reach this decision prior to the time the MTA Board has considered whether or not it will explore options for building this subway in a way which does not destroy the hospitality industry and which does not fundamentally and permanently harm the financial district. So the people on Flower Street, the owners, the Bonaventure, the large buildings, urge you to continue this measure until such time as you know what the MTA's final position is.
Ellen Isaacs, followed by, uh, Brian Pendleton, and you want to have a separate card, but I'm going to add you to this, so you probably didn't know the rule. Then Juan Akala. Brian, you're next after this.
Good morning, council members. I'm lost, Ellen Isaacs. I am Metro's Liaison to City Hall. The Regional Connector is a one-point-four-billion, two-mile, small but mighty project. It's going to allow a single-seat ride without transfers from Long Beach to East L.A., to the Valleys, and to the West Side. The lease agreement and the easements have been agreed upon. We just need City Council's approval and instructions to move forward with this regionally significant project. The urgency is that it takes time to set up the lay-down site. We need to get on that property in order to proceed with this project. It is the only viable site in which to put the tunnel boring machine and the rest of the equipment for this project. I urge the council to proceed today to approve these agreements. I'm here with my colleague, Brian Pennington, who is the Executive Officer for Delivery of the Regional Connector Project. If you have questions, he's available. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And you're here standing to support, correct, Brian? You don't need to say anything? Mr. Pendleton?
I just want to reiterate what my colleague just said. Uh, this site is essential for moving forward the project, and not only with the main contract, but we need it now because we, this is going to house our project staff, and also we have some advanced utility works which this, uh, site will support. So we do need that, we do need your support.
Thank you. For recital, state your name and who you represent.
Uh, Brian Pennington, Metro. I'm the Executive Officer.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Juan Akala?
Yes, I do not believe one agency should be fighting with another agency. You should just get it done if it's going to help a lot of people get the project done. Do not worry about the city of Monrovia giving more money to the city. You know, uh, what is this? All about money, not about people? If this project favors people over money, get it done. So, uh, yeah, these people that want it done right away, get it done. Do you understand that? Get it done? Get it done. Do not delay because somebody is going to give you more money. Okay? Uh, one minute, save my other minute. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Wayne from Encino? No Wayne from Encino? Okay. Very good. So, uh, that completes the comment cards. Uh, no comment? Let's vote on this, Madam Clerk. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes. I just wanted to have a special, Michael and Susan, Bloomfield? Bloomfield, you're here. There's special Take Your Parents to Work Day. Uh, we have a special, uh, introduce a, uh, Mr. Councilman. Get to the mic. Your parents are here, not that every day. Give them a good little love for your parents.
I have a lot of love for my parents. They're wonderful people. I've known them in my entire life, I can say, uh, ever since I was born, even before there, and, and they're fabulous people. They were here, and, uh, they came to see my wife swearing in, uh, as Commissioner, and, and they're here to, uh, uh, enjoy what we do a little bit, so.
Well, they enjoy, we're proud of you. Thank you very much, Bob. Big hand for the Bloomfields. Welcome here.
Uh, Mr. Krikorian, before we...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, uh, move for reconsideration of item one B on last Friday's agenda. Uh, that was Council File thirteen dash zero one six zero dash S one five six. Um, it's a lien on the property located at seventy-four eighteen North Laurel Canyon Boulevard. Uh, like to ask for reconsideration of that so that we can allow the property owner additional time to make the necessary payments.
Okay, so let's vote on reconsideration. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
And now if we could continue that, Mr. President, for two weeks.
Okay, and that will bring us to where?
Fifteen eyes.
Okay, I'm sorry, fifteen eyes. Now, Madam Clerk, uh, to continue this for two weeks brings us to what date?
January twenty-eighth.
Okay, so that's continued to January twenty-eighth. I'd like to, uh, defer to Mr. Englander at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, uh, we save the best for last. I said we had somebody incredibly special here. And as we kick off the many items of discussion, the policy items before us, um, I'm joined by a pretty remarkable leader. Earlier today, Dr. Lucy Jones was appointed by Mayor Eric Garcetti to lead a partnership, a unique partnership, an effort with the city of Los Angeles and the U.S. Geological Survey to enhance our preparedness, response, and recovery efforts. We all know Dr. Jones, a world-renowned scientist and expert when it comes to understanding the seismic activities below our feet. Not only is she an expert, but a leader, leading and partnering with the city of Los Angeles on many public awareness initiatives, including the Great Shakeout, the International Earthquake Conference, and many other policy discussions and items. This will be an opportunity for now, for, for us now, to collaborate in, in marrying the science to the policy. Today, the City Council leadership invited Dr. Jones to share with us how critical it is to be prepared and how to mitigate the impacts of earthquakes. Because the Northridge earthquake didn't just impact my district, it affect, it, it affects and rippled, its rippled effect crossed every district, the region, and the world. Efforts of every single one of us in the city family, uh, were affected and will be affected for generations to come. So with that, I turn it over to Dr. Jones. But now that she is a part of, Mr. President, the city family, I'd like her to give her testimony and presentation, uh, in front of the podium.
And I was going to invite her to do that. Uh, Dr. Jones, could you please come to the center table?
And if we can put our hands together for a warm welcome and round of applause for Dr. Lucy Jones. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'm, uh, I'm honored to be, to join the city in this partnership. I think there's a lot of amazing things that we're going to be able to do, uh, and I hope I can share what we know from our science, uh, to help you be, get, uh, ready for the, the next earthquake. Because although Northridge was horrible, it could be worse. And I want to start with our picture of that. Several years ago, we did a big study of what the San Andreas earthquake would be like. And I have a very short film here that's going to tell you the, the conclusions that came out of our study for an earthquake on the San Andreas Fault.
It's a sunny morning in Southern California. Across the region, seven-point-five million people are busy at work. Several hundred thousand of them are commuting jobs in different counties, far from where they live. Over two-hundred thousand commuters work and reside on opposite sides of the San Andreas Fault. Today, these families and many others across the region will be separated. Eighteen-hundred people will die. Eighteen hundred people will die. Fifty-three thousand people will be injured. And $213 billion in damage will occur. It's 10:00 a.m. The largest earthquake to hit Southern California in modern times has just begun. Some people react appropriately, others don't. In the intense shaking, nearly 1,500 buildings collapsed. Infrastructure is severely compromised and 300,000 buildings suffer significant damage. The rupture travels 200 miles northwest along the San Andreas Fault. Violent shaking lasting as long as two minutes in some areas. Finally, the earthquake is over. Many of the lifelines of Southern California have been disrupted. A large number of people are trapped in collapsed buildings. Over 1,600 fires start, some turning into super conflagrations. Millions of people are trying to use their phones, causing the system to become overloaded. In the months ahead, there will be tens of thousands of aftershocks. Residents will struggle to recover from the earthquake. There will be no water for weeks or months and no electricity. Traveling from point to point within the city will be extremely difficult. And 255,000 people will be displaced from their homes. We are all in this together. We will suffer the consequences if we don't do our part right now. How quickly life gets back to normal after this disaster is up to you and those around you.
Okay, so that's our picture of what we think will happen in a big San Andreas earthquake. And in fact, this is a study done with several hundred experts trying to get the best picture of what it would be. What I want to do today is bring up another, a presentation about this and be able to look at what the impacts are for the city and the special issues that we need to address. Can I get the presentation? There we are. Okay. But I, and the title, this isn't working. The title I have for this talk is Imagine America Without Los Angeles. Because the point is that what is at stake is not...
Doc, you want to hold for a minute? We have, we're having technical? Can this be fixed quickly?
I, this isn't working.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll let you wing it.
Well, I'll try and wing it. The, okay, just, just keep on going. Two, two slides through. Okay. Okay, keep on, all right, all right. But what's really at stake is our whole urban society. This is not so much about dying. Eighteen hundred dead sounds really awful. For an earthquake that's not very frequent, it's not the biggest issue. Every death in an earthquake is horrible, but you're far more likely to die on our freeways. What we are worried about is having a society that will function afterwards. And that really is the big picture. If we look at what we do in a city, before any of our buildings came in, we put in an infrastructure. We put in water pipes. We put in electrical lines. Then we set up a transportation system. Then we set up our houses, our commercial buildings, our industrial area, our power plants, our communication systems. All of this needs to work to be able to keep on living here. And one of the big issues that we face is our society is becoming increasingly complex and making it more difficult for this to go on. And we also have an issue in the way we've addressed it. Traditionally, when we look at earthquake issues, we look at individuals. When the building code comes in and says, how do we build to withstand an earthquake? We look and we see one building. The problem is, the consequences of a bad building don't happen just to that one building, all right? If we have, well, our building code says, let's keep them from collapsing. And in fact, our building code says, you know, we can't prevent it completely, but we want to have a 99% chance that we're not going to collapse in the San Andreas earthquake. Let's look at what that means. That means that we're actually accepting that 1% of our code-compliant buildings will fall down. We're accepting a certain level of actual collapse. And be, and that's another point, is our building code is only life safety. Beyond keeping it from collapsing, there's whether or not it's usable. And if we look at the data from Northridge, what we see is that for every collapsed building, we had about 10 red tags, meaning the building was so badly damaged, we had to close it and eventually tear it down. And beyond that, for every yellow tag, we then had, for every red tag, we had another four yellow tags, meaning that it was, you, eventually you could get back in, but it had to be fixed first. The implications then, if we have 1% of our buildings collapsed, we expect to have 10% of our buildings red-tagged and 40% that we can't use. We're talking about 50% of our buildings not being inhabitable, and that's when the code works as designed. And of course, many of our buildings are not new. Many of them are older and built to earlier codes that we know have problems. So what we end up seeing is that building damage and destruction caused by a lot of different reasons has a lot of consequences for us. We have an interruption of our business. We have life lost. But we end up, on the long term, if we have trouble repairing them all, not being able to bring our businesses back. And I want to make the point, actually, that in the Christchurch earthquake a few years ago, or, you know, the city in New Zealand, they had an earthquake right under their central business district. Seventy percent of the buildings in their central business district were damaged. 100% were closed. You couldn't let people go into the adjoining buildings because of the risk of collapse. And that's what we're looking at here, is the possibility that a lot of our buildings will not be able to be entered. And how do we keep our economic system going? Another big issue is water. And again, I'm taking some examples from Christchurch. They lost almost all of their pipes. And when we did an analysis in Shakeout, we ended up, 70% of the pipes in Southern California are a, of a known brittle variety. They were put in a long time ago. The water system's one of the first things you put in. And yet, if you lose your water system, how do you function? This isn't completely hopeless, though. The city, the City of Christchurch has been working with a professor from Cornell, who is also, Tom O'Rourke, he's also working with Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. And they were able to show certain types of pipes that are actually flexible. Between the two earthquakes in Christchurch, they got them to replace two kilometers of the pipe with this more flexible pipe. In the next big earthquake, essentially, all of the non-retrofitted pipes were destroyed. Those two kilometers had no brakes. So there are ways to make pipes that are safe. And that is incredibly important. If we don't have water, the risk of fires go way up. I want to make another point and call out important things that are going on at DWP. Of course, you know, Elizabeth Lake Tunnel brings in quite a bit of our water. It crosses the San Andreas Fault in a, in a tunnel built in, a wood tunnel built in 1908, okay? When that earthquake happens, and it will, this tunnel is going to be offset. How are we going to get water? Well, in fact, DWP is working with Professor O'Rourke and putting flexible pipe into the tunnel to be able to carry water afterwards. And I really commend them for doing it. It is a very important part of our system. Because if you don't have water, you don't have much about anything else. We can lose it either from the shaking or from fault offset. Just about everything we need to operate as a society depends on water. Our estimate from the Shakeout is, when things go the best they could, it'll take us six months to get our water back to every location. If you don't have water, you don't have small businesses. And this is a really critical vulnerability that leads the risk of having people get up and just leave. If you go, how many months are you willing to go without a shower? I think we'll find it difficult for people to stay in LA after that. The other thing about water, of course, is the triggering of fires. And when we look at that, again, in our assessment, in the Shakeout, we found that we doubled the losses in the earthquake with the fires, that, you know, destroying more buildings that, and we doubled the life loss in our estimates because of the fires. It is one of our biggest, really serious problems, especially considering that in the Shakeout analysis, we, we specified there were no Santa Ana winds. I wish I could do that for the real earthquake. But if we have Santa Ana winds when we have our big earthquake, we have the potential for, for complete destruction in our fires, okay? Last thing I want to point out, there's a lot of other places I could take you, but these are the ones that I want to focus on today, is how important our communication networks are. How many of you have a cellphone? I presume it's just, it's everybody in this room. How many of you had a cellphone in 1994? When we had the Northridge earthquake, almost nobody had cellphones. And it was three months before the beginning of the World Wide Web. There was no public internet at the time of the Northridge earthquake. And we are now creating a level of vulnerability that we don't completely understand. We have created a society that requires the internet to function. And of course, the internet will be there, you just may not be able to connect to it. And what will be the impact on the city? How do we keep our jobs moving if we don't have communication capability? So understanding our communication vulnerability is really important. I want to wrap up by pointing, talking you about what's at stake here. Let's, and I, and it's really about the economy, all right? If we look at what we expect to have happen, we expect our economy to grow with time. When we have a disaster, we lose a lot of, you know, we had $20 billion in direct losses but we, in Northridge. We also had people no longer able to work. There was no power. There was, there was no water. You couldn't get back to work. But the yellow line shows the sort of recovery that we had in the Northridge earthquake. We had a very proactive FEMA. Lot of people had earthquake insurance. Money came pouring in. We hired contractors. We hired subcontractors. And within a couple of years, the economy of Los Angeles had returned to what it was. This doesn't have to be the case. If we can't get the economy going right away, we end up with a much longer time of recovery. And the difference in the financial losses can be huge, where with a long-term recovery, if you can't get back going, the losses exceed what you lose in the earthquake by quite a bit. And I have an example here from New Orleans. Need to get a couple more lines up here. So here is the growth of the economic activity in Nashville and New Orleans. Before Katrina, they were similar, right? At the time of Katrina in 2005, New Orleans lost $80 billion. You can see how the economy has gone down since then. They've lost $105 billion in productivity just in those seven years. And this is what I'm worried about for Los Angeles. We're going to probably all live through the earthquake. The question is whether we're going to want to live in Los Angeles after the earthquake and what is that going to do to our businesses? To be able to keep things going, we need to protect our most critical infrastructure, which includes water, electricity, gas, internet, communications, and of course, our buildings to be able to go back to work, right? There's other systems that are controlled, that, that then depend on those core support systems. We can't prevent all damage. What we're trying to do is make ourselves safe enough in enough areas. Because resilience in one area can protect us in others. For instance, we lose our buildings, our commercial structures. People can't go to work. Well, if we have a good internet functioning, a lot of people will be able to telecommute and will be able to compensate for those losses. Or as another one, we lose our water system. As long as we have transportation, we can truck in water, at least for people to drink, right? So these are, we need to make enough of the system work together. And I'm just highlighting cellphone towers and internet as areas where we don't understand our vulnerability because this is all new since the last earthquake happened, right? So we're all in this together. How, what life we're going to have afterwards is going to depend on the choices we make before. I am really grateful for the opportunity to be able to work with the city and try and take this research and turn it into actual changes in our society to increase the chances that we'll all want to live here after the earthquake happens.
Thank you, Doctor. We will now go to Mr. Englander followed by Mr. Labange.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, I actually have a certificate to the USGS, a resolution from all of us signed, thanking you for this collaborative effort as well. And it's very unique. We are the first city to partner on this magnitude, if you will. And this, this is a unique partnership and I want to thank the mayor because it's remarkable that we, we now have you on board as part of the city family to work with us as we start implementing new visions and policies and what we should be doing for the next 20 years and looking back of what we haven't done since Northridge in the last 20 years. We're on Item 25, and I want to just speak to that and ask for that, we, we take the recommendations and we receive and file those, but we do so carefully and diligently as preparedness is the first step to ensure citizens are equipped to help themselves prepare for and respond to future earthquakes and other disasters because many of us know from the Northridge earthquake, as we've just heard, we're on our own. And many of my colleagues have noticed in the rotunda earlier today, a number of organizations that were here, from MySafeLA, Operation Hope, CERT, Fire Department, all of our first responders, organizations like the Red Cross that did so much during the Northridge earthquake, mobilized over 14,000 American Red Cross volunteers for relief efforts. We, we can't do enough and we have to ensure that we prepare more. In terms of regular drills, we, I ask all of you to join this year in the Shakeout and sign up, put it in your newsletters. Let's make sure people are aware of it. I shared with you the OK Help signs. We're also distributing the Disaster Recovery Plans, partnering with EMD. So every family, every home, every business can have one of these in Los Angeles to ensure they know what to do before and after a major disaster. We also have OK Help signs being delivered citywide as we speak that are going to be door hangers for multifamily and single-family dwellings throughout the city of Los Angeles. So I ask you to ensure that we do more than we're doing. And I want to thank Tom Labange as well and his partnership and a lot of these initiatives and, and bringing this motion forward. Thank you very much. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Englander. And as you mentioned earlier, Mr. Smith and Mr. Burnson, all of us had our mentors as we worked our, but Dr. Jones, you're very special. I hope we all get a copy of your JPEG or whatever because it's so important, what works, to learn that. And each member, look at me. I want you to get a deputy who's responsible for preparedness because that's where it is. That's where it is, to train the people. And multilingual information, the biggest challenge, I remember for the days after 94, was how many people who came from other parts of the world didn't believe that government could do anything because sometimes in other tragedies, other parts of the world, there is no response. The response that's necessary, the multilingual, the Salvation Army was there hand-in-hand to help and other organizations as well, which is so good. But Dr. Jones, I'm older than you, right?
A little, not much.
Just a little. But we remember the first Friday of March, maybe Joey, you're too young to remember. They used to have air raid sirens because there was a thing called the Cold War and they want us all trained for the nuclear attack. That's a different history. But there will be a eruption of this earth and soil, that we will have an earthquake. To have this, Mitch, is a good thing and strong support for that. And in talking to our President, Mr. Wesson, in the future, we're looking for a possibly a drill like we had last time in 94 where we had a council meeting outside in the field in the event that the disaster would happen here that took City Hall out of commission. We would still have to get the city back together. That's why I put a loud shout-out, Mr. CAO, for home assigned cars, for our metro, police officers and others who work for the city so they can have a response to that. I know some municipalities have problems because they don't have workers who live close enough to respond. And we want to make sure we get that response that's always been there and will continue to be. Dr. Jones, you're a saint. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's something we all should live and breathe because it will happen. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Englander and Mr. Labange, we have a series of motions that deal with earthquakes or earthquake-related things. So I think we should begin to go through those now. Some of them have cards, some of them do not. On this item, we have one card, and that's Juan Akala. Dr. Jones, thank you very much for being with us. This is a great partnership. Okay, Mr. Akala, and if you would please...
Mr. President as well.
Yes.
And ensure that we're going to receive and file this is what the vote will be.
Okay.
I love Lucy. She knows what she's doing. Anyway, consideration motion, Labange, Englander, relative to the feasibility of implementing and conducting a monthly earthquake drill. Yeah, that's a good idea. I remember when I was in high school, woo, 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 every, I think every month, we had to go and do a, a drill in case the Japanese or the Germans were coming. That would be a good idea, to have an earthquake drill. That would be a good idea, to have an earthquake drill in case the earthquake is coming. Yeah.
Okay, so what do we, Madam Clerk, we're voting to receive and file?
Yes.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Englander, I, do you have, it's my understanding you want to take up 24 now?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're on 24. We do have a couple of cards. Why don't we wait until after it is discussed? So, go right ahead.
Item 24, colleagues, is on the feasibility of developing mobile apps, text messaging, early warning systems. I think it's important, particularly given the discussion this week on the 20th anniversary, to bring up our general manager, Anna Burton, from Emergency Management Department, if we can have her come up to the table. That would be great. Share with us EMD's ongoing collaborative efforts in developing an early warning mobile alert system for earthquakes. Ms. Burton has served the city for over 27 years, has been a leading, leading department in setting and coordinating disaster response policy and protocol, not only within our city family, but also regionally and across the nation. She's truly the brain and the brawn of this operation. Serving as Assistant General Manager for the department for many years, and leading several collaborative initiatives with the city of Los Angeles, across multiple agencies. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning, Anna Burton. Thank you for that introduction. Specific to this, the Emergency Management Department has been working very closely with USGS in relation to their Shake Alert project. We have been testing their systems since February 2012 on our computers within the Emergency Operations Center, as well as working closely with the Fire Department and the Police Department, to make sure that the, the systems that would actually be used to accept information related to the USGS system statewide, would then be able to accept the information, and then we would be able to forward that not only to the city departments, but then most, in the highest priority, as a public message, alerting residents and businesses of the potential of shaking within the Los Angeles area. The technology and the other systems, I would defer to Lucy Jones's office, if she wanted to comment. And I know we do have representatives from the Information Technology Agency here as well today, who have been working with us to look at the system and see how best to use it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Englander, I'm going to call the cards.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, and as the maker of the motion, Mr. Englander, I would request that this be sent back to committee, so that we could review it. Okay, Mr. Walsh, Sean, and Mr. Akala, please come forward. Sean, come right on up.
Yes, early warnings must be of all disasters, not just earthquakes. They should, they should give us about 10 minutes, 10 seconds to get ready. All, I'm for this time, all warnings should be coming.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Akala, and Donna Peerman.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-I-S dot org, or J. Walsh Confidential. You know, you, you expose your racism here. And I'm speaking, no, they're not allowing you to see my white face, my white Jew face, but I'm speaking to all the minorities. I identify myself as a Jew, and you get upset.
No, 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 Mr. Walsh, hold his time. Mr. Walsh, please, stay on the topic. That's all I'm asking.
The topic is that this mobile app is for predominantly middle-class white people. How, what percentage of the population, minority population, have computers, mobile apps? In other words, what we are saying when we do this, is we will alert the west side, west of La Brea first. And as far as the rest of you, the darker people, complected people, they'll be nothing. And I'm telling you right now, that this city, right now, is not prepared for a major quake. And if they pass all of this, which should have been passed about 10 years ago, we ought to better hope that there is no major quake in this city for the next 10 or 12 years. As the Cantor Commission said, this agency is in decline, this city is in decline, and all of the good intentions now. And remember, and don't anyone with a color of skin darker than mine, and remember, what do I know about racism? I'm a white guy. We invented it. And I'm telling you minorities, that you will be the lowest priority in an earthquake, because all those white people have their mobile apps. That's what's happening in this city. And I call this, maybe one or two exceptions, the city council, an all-white jury. Remember, everything I say is psychotic ravings now, and will be conventional wisdom soon.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, your time. And you may not be aware, but there are a significant number of African-Americans and Latinos that have cellphones and computers and things like that, okay? And please be quiet, don't disturb the meeting. With that, Mr. Akala, followed by Ms. Peerman.
All right. One thing we forget to mention is that if there is a big earthquake, the homeless already know how to live outdoors. So, they're probably, would be the most benefited by an earthquake. Like he says, the minorities don't get much. They don't even get their, their streets fixed. There are cracks on the streets.
Juan, just stay on the subject, that's all. I'm not a hard guy. Stay on the subject.
If we have a, an earthquake, we'll have huge gaps on the streets, right? But there's already huge gaps on the streets. They're, they don't get fixed. Anyway, when do we have the earthquake, we should have good roads, like she said, good transportation, so we can get the supplies we need.
I know, come on, Juan, back on subject.
Okay, the subject is the homeless rule.
Anyway, Ms. Peerman.
Let me say, first of all, this is not a racist issue whatsoever, because there's a lot of people who have internet and computers. But we do have some other problems. Number one, I think we're relying too much on the computer and too much on the internet and text, cellphones, because there are some people who do not have them. Second of all, you might have a problem with text messages. If you continually sending text messages, have a text message, there's a text message, if people already have a lot of text messages on their phone at the time, then you will have the, the cellphones, in a sense, fall. So, we're going to have a problem. I'm not sure if they're going to be sending text messages to everybody who have cellphones about what to do, and I'm not sure how that's going to work. And it seems strange that we're spending all this money, and we can't do the video conferencing in Van Nuys. So, it seems, anyway, I don't know exactly how this is going to work. I don't know if they're going to be innovating people's computers with information, so, or if people even find these information. And a lot of times, you can't get text messages if you're driving. So, a lot of times, the person can't even get the information at the time. So, I'm not sure how good, I mean, it's fantastic to have earthquake preparedness. I think we should have that, I forgot to say, I think the drill should be done monthly. But I'm not sure about this text messages, and bring back video conferencing in Van Nuys. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have no more cards on this item. So, Mr. Englander, without objection, we will refer this to the proper committee.
And that is the Public Safety Committee.
And I thought that. Okay, so, Mr. Englander, you want to go to 26 next, or?
26, please, and if you can stay there, Ms. Burton. I also want to bring up, for this item, our Deputy Chief, Mario Rueda, from Emergency Service Bureau, and as well as Los Angeles Police Department, Commander Blake Chow, Counterterrorism Special Operations Bureau, and Captain Phil. Thank you so much, from Emergency Operations as well. These three Public Safety Department, establish, coordinate, and execute the city's earthquake response, recovers policy and protocols. We'll be sharing today exactly what we're doing as a city. You know, it's often said that we're not doing enough, but I got to tell you what we are doing is pretty remarkable. And so, we've brought the leading experts in the city to share all of that with us in that partnership. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. Anna Burton again. I'll start off with the developments since the 1994 earthquake, with some of the most substantial enhancements that we have made to the city's emergency management program. And the first is, we actually created our department. Prior to the 94 earthquake, we were a division within another department, and we were actually created a department per ordinance in July 2000. And since then, we have initiated partnerships with all the city departments, expanded our programs, our planning, our training, our exercise, and community preparedness. And we're very proud of the efforts that we're, we're continuing to enforce. We've constructed a new Emergency Operations Center. Through a bond measure in 2002, we constructed a new state-of-the-art earthquake-supported up to withstand an 8.0 earthquake within the downtown Los Angeles area, an 84,000-square-foot facility that houses Fire Metro, LAPD Racer, and the Emergency Management Department, as well as a fully operational state-of-the-art Emergency Operations Center, that we've activated a number of times over the past several years. We opened in 2008, and we continue to support planning, training, exercise, and response command centers, and mutual MAC supports of events across the city. We're working now to develop a community enhancement training program, our five-step program. It is a toolkit that has not only checklists and supplies that communities and neighborhoods can use, but we exercised that plan last year in the Arroyo Seco Neighborhood Council District. We videotaped that, and we have that available on our website. In the next upcoming year, we're going to be holding four more workshops for areas across the city of Los Angeles, and that will help them identify how to develop their own plan, how to exercise their plan, and identify stakeholders within their individual communities. We are continuing to identify the need to support communities in a catastrophic earthquake. To do that, we need more supplies. So, in support with the Office of the Mayor and using Homeland Security grant funds, as well as city monies, we have purchased caches of durable medical equipment, consumable medical supplies, shelter supplies, and they've been staged across the city in partnership with the Red Cross, the Department of Aging, and our Department of Recreation and Parks. For our city employees, we've developed a disaster service worker training program. And as of this month, we have over 33,000 city employees, non-sworn employees, who have gone through the training, and now better understand their roles and responsibilities related to what their jobs may be in a disaster. We've also entered into agreements with several partner agencies. We've signed an MOU with the American Red Cross, with our LA Emergency Preparedness Foundation, and we're continuing to establish relationships and partnerships with those key stakeholders, and will continue to identify those different agencies and enter into signed agreements where necessary. We've mentioned the Shake Alert. That process is continuing as we expand our relationship with USGS. And annually, since 2008, since its creation, citywide, we support and include all city departments in the annual Shake Alert, or Shake Out California exercise. Thank you.
Good morning, Mario Rueda, Deputy Chief with the Fire Department. Make no mistake about it, what Lucy Jones said was quite accurate. We had hundreds of fires during the 1994 event. I myself served on a water tender task force, because we had no water in the hydrants. On a day like today, with Santa Ana winds, it could be catastrophic. Conflagrations, and that number of hundreds would be thousands. Fortunately for responders like Chief Snyder, they started to bring order to chaos, and that is one of the most significant accomplishments since 1994, is the collaboration between the city agencies. You heard Ms. Burton speak of it, but also the training that LAPD and LAFD have undergone to unify in terms of our command structures, both in the field level and at the EOC. There's also been infrastructure improvements. Since 1994, we've rebuilt 20 fire stations to the essential standard. In 1994, those firefighters that were shaken out of bed, were shaken out of bed to destroyed fire stations. They had to pry their way out of, pry their way out of quarters to get their equipment. Several were injured. So, we have made progress in that arena. As you also saw today, the CERT volunteers, we train annually 4,000 CERT volunteers to really be that force multiplier for us. Additionally, in terms of resources, we have paramedics in each fire station. We've added nearly 40 rescue ambulances since the 1994 quake. We've also deployed six urban, urban search and rescue task forces around the city. And lastly, we do have a FEMA-funded urban search and rescue 70-person team here in Los Angeles, that has responded to other events around the nation, including New York during 9/11, Hurricane Katrina, Hurricane Rita, and other events. These are significant enhancements to what occurred in 1994, and this remains one of those most significant hazards that we prepare for in the Fire Department. That concludes my comments, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. And what's your fancy?
That we go ahead and approve their recommendations, their report, and as outlined in the report, establish 2014 annual EOC functional exercises based on EQ scenarios, to continue supporting California integrated network systems, Caltech earthquake early warning system partnership, and to continue to support, develop, and distribute community trainings and exercise programs. If we could go ahead and adopt...
Okay, we'll vote on that, but I have one card. Let me, Mr. Labange.
Just a friendly, friendly addition, that we direct the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, that they inform all the neighborhood councils of this effort, and that the neighborhood councils be encouraged to get involved. No problem with that, Mitch?
No problem with that at all.
Madam Clerk, you got that?
I'd like to also hear from Police Department as well.
Oh, well, then, go right on in.
Commander Blake Chow, Counterterrorism Special Operations Bureau. I just want to say a couple of remarks, and then I want to hand it over to my colleague here, Captain Phil Fontanetta, who is a nationally renowned expert on emergency management and training. We all remember kind of where we are, where we were when that earthquake hit. I remember, I was a four-year police officer, sitting in my, just getting off watch, and I felt that shake, and thought, my God, what was that? It was, where was it? And then getting the phone call, half an hour later, saying, Blake, you have to be at roll call at 6:00 a.m. And we were deployed up to the valley, and I really, I remember being deployed up into the valley and seeing the devastation, the collapsed apartment complexes, working with the Fire Department and recovery, the cars, the building facades that had gone down. And of course, we shouldn't forget that we also lost an LAPD police officer that morning, Clarence Wayne Dean, who drove off and overpassed, not knowing that it had collapsed. But anyway, a lot has changed since then, especially in our, in our arena. We, as far as planning is concerned, it's more unified, it's much more inclusive in the city family than it was back then. Training of first responders and community members is much more robust and more intense than it was back then. Command and control, we, we practice command and control on an everyday basis, but also, you know, in exercises with the Fire Department, so that when something like this does happen, we have a very good command and control of what's going on out there. Operations is extremely important. We play much better in the sandbox with our other city entities, as well as some of the state and federal agencies than we did back in 1994. And then, of course, there's technology. The big thing that Anna mentioned was our Racer Division, which is our LAPD 24/7 Operations Center. We have the ability to monitor what's going on in the city, and redirect uniform resources to any place in the city, and actually even recall resources from home, so that we can effectively help the city recover. But what I'd like to do, he brought some aides with him, so, that are really interesting, but I'm going to hand it over to Captain Fontanetta, and he'll go into just a teeny bit more detail.
Okay, Captain, welcome.
Yes, good morning. I was deployed to Northridge very fast that morning, and I remember the first two days, there was no water. And several times this morning, I've heard folks mention about issues with water. The logistical aspect of sustained operations is of paramount importance. Without having that logistics train to bring in commodities, not only for first responders to sustain operations, but for the overall health and well-being of the community, that's what needs to be always in the back of our minds. How do we set up those logistical, those points of distribution? And what I'd like to bring your attention to is this. This is a can of water, and this showed up a couple of days into the... And this showed up a couple of days into the incident. It was donated by Anheuser-Busch Incorporated from Fairfield, California, and it's labeled "drinking water, not for sale." And there is an expiration date used by April 24, 1994. I kept this and I keep this in my office as a reminder because this, to me, just this one can, this is what life safety, scene stabilization, property preservation, economy of force, continuity of operations, and the overall health and well-being of the entire community is all about.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Englander, I have one card or did you want to say something else before I bring up the public?
No, you can, you can go ahead and take the card. I just, if we could, I know it's rare to applaud our city family and, but they've dedicated so much and they bring so much expertise, history and knowledge and experience that, that helps us prepare and set policy going into the future. If we could give them a round of applause for everything that they've done.
Very, very, very appropriate. Very appropriate. Mr. Akala, please come forward. Item 26.
Yeah, I remember that earthquake. I was in Downey. I used to have a home. Now I'm homeless, thanks to your system.
Now let's stay on the item.
Yeah, and I used to have one of those cans of water because I used to sell things in the flea market. That's a collectible item.
On the item, on the item.
Yeah, we do need water during an emergency. What's the item?
26.
Oh. Well, I don't think we're very prepared.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, now we will prepare to vote on this item.
Did you, do I need a second?
You got it for me.
Got it, okay.
Okay, let's, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes. It's adopted as amended.
Thank you. We'll move on. Okay, Mr. Labange, it's my understanding that we have items on the same subject.
We could take them all together if you would. If you want to call the public comment card down, that'd be fine.
Yeah, that's, and that would be items 19, 20, and 22. So if I can get Mr. Jim McQuiston. Mr. Akala's out of time now. Mr. Spindler or Wayne from Encino and Ravenous Catalyst, please come forward. Yes, Mr. McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, you all probably know I'm a Caltech graduate, but maybe you don't know I was in here, not in the council chamber, in the 1933 earthquake. And my school had to be torn down and rebuilt afterwards when the Field Act was prepared. And I've been through many, many earthquakes since that time. But I want to emphasize to you people, having been trained by Charles Richter at Caltech, the next earthquake that is expected will be 100 times the energy of that Northridge earthquake, 100 times. Just think of that. It's something that we have to fix our building code quickly because if we don't, we are responsible for the deaths of those people because we didn't prepare the city's safety. And you all have my one-page statement here. I tried to keep it brief and keep it very pertinent to you. Believe me, I have tried to make my single-family home earthquake safe and I cannot do it. I cannot do it. That is how strong this earthquake is going to be that we all expect. And we have motion pictures that show 18-story buildings crumpled from an earthquake 150 miles away, 150 miles away. And that was built to our earthquake code. We have to do something quick because if we don't, Al Quispiolo says, the city is liable. I don't want to see that happen.
Okay, and thank you. And Mr. Labange, what we're going to do, we're going to add items 20, 23, and 27 to this category. Okay, with that said, Wayne from Encino.
So we have, according to the notes I wrote here on my cup, which I'm doing to conserve paper, concrete and wood buildings are to be identified in the city. Now, why would they want to do that? Of course, so that you can wind up taking these property owners and forcing them to pay for seismic fitting and retrofitting and wiring upgrades. It's just a hidden property tax that the people are going to be facing. That's your only reason for this. It has nothing to do with public safety. It's a revenue measure. Up in San Francisco, they've been attacking homeowners and forcing these homeowners at substantial costs to make earthquake retrofits that they cannot afford. As a result, you turn these property owners from fee simple owners into mortgagees because they cannot afford these upgrades. They will have to take out loans at expensive interest rates. That's all that's going on here. Also, by identifying buildings as potential earthquake hazards, you are depressing the prices and resale values of these properties. So this is a continued attack on the, on the middle class and on renters, that this cost will be pushed to the side and sidestepped and transferred to the renters who are going to have to pay increased rents. By taking and identifying earthquake faults, you've destroyed the viability of one of the largest projects in Los Angeles, which is the Millennium Tower. Everybody lives on an earthquake fault. Every piece of property in California is subject to earthquake damage. But what you're going to do is you're going to take people who have paid off their mortgages, you're going to take people that are responsible, and you're going to force them into costly repairs and upgrades. And this cannot be tolerated by any level. If somebody owns a home and they bought their home before 1976 or 1978, they built that housing under that particular zoning. A person has a constitutional right to buy a home with that zoning and maintain that zoning despite changes that happen afterwards. You continue to depress the value of properties, decimate businesses, decimate the ability of people to make a living in the city. And it's got to stop. This is what I call economic terrorism. And this is what the city council is engaged in. These people cannot afford to spend 30, 40, 50, 70, $100,000 on these seismic retrofits, on these old buildings. The answer ultimately will be, these properties will be condemned, they will be torn down into vacant lots and sold to developers, who then will buy them at almost no cost and will profit in the billions of dollars over the next 20 years. This is a scam. You bring these people up here in the name of public safety, but what you're really doing is, is you're taking a Trojan horse, which is an earthquake that's never going to happen, and you're going to tell everybody they're going to die. Well, they're going to die anyway if it's a nine or a 10. That's the way life is. You wake up each day, you might get wiped out on the freeway. That's the way it is. We live in an earthquake zone. We're here for the weather. You assume the risk based on the place you live. We all know that this is a dangerous earthquake. I was in the Northridge earthquake when it happened. I was living in the valley. Walls came down. It was horrible. How many people died in a relationship to 3.5 million people? Almost nobody. So that's why stop this project and stop depressing the property values of homeowners. We have enough problems already with the market.
Thank you. If you please come forward.
And since on my way in here today, I was asked to sign my name and give ID, and I had to say the magic word, which I guess is your term for my rights, AKA the Brown Act, before they would not make me sign in. I'm going to state my right right now before we get started. As far as, Mr. Weston, you've had a federal ruling about silencing the microphone.
You have to stay. No, no, no. Why don't you speak to these items now and then at general?
Because I was told I had to assert my rights before I'd be given them downstairs.
General public comment, you can say whatever.
I was told I'd have to assert my right before I began.
No, no, I don't know who told you that.
The person when I came in the door. So about a year and a half ago, I came to the council talking about hempcrete as a new building material to be used. I said, if you didn't go on and spend 10 minutes watching a YouTube video about making hempcrete houses, you weren't interested enough, you weren't passionate enough, and you were just too focused on preventing the negative than enjoying the positive. Hempcrete can be made with a cement mixer. There is no water waste. This thing in West Virginia, the waste storage cement and steel byproduct production. It's things that we waste water, galvanizing steel and making cement out of, it's an amazing genius thing we can do, but it's more genius to recognize what we're doing. The wood test, when they tested the Civil Engineer Department, tested walls with different amounts of hempcrete infill, its use as an infill and an insulator. The walls held up from anywhere to four to 11 times the stress test. That means that it, it's what, the increase in the bulk load, basically, the carrying load that the wood can handle, four to 11 times, depending on the proportion of infill used. It smolders in a fire. It smolders and puts itself out. That's what this plant does. It's breathable, like a palm tree in the wind, and it doesn't snap. That's what this does. Foundations don't move, like a big old rock in the dirt hugging it. So if you care, again, look into it. It's not like I'm sitting here like, oh, hopefully we can smoke it. When you grow hemp, the cross-pollinization takes the psychoactive stuff out of marijuana. That's just how plants work, too. Speaking of the wastewater and all of that stuff, that's why this is important, too. We need to stop using as much cement. Hempcrete does use small amounts of cement. Nobody needs to take their hand out of the pot. Nobody is getting cut out here by using Mother Nature and what she gave us. That's just what's up. Also, it's biodegradable when it's, not when it's above ground, but when you break it up or it demolishes in an earthquake, you can bury it and it actually makes itself fertilizer again, like all plant leaves do and all plant roughage does. So if you're not, you know, I don't care if you build hemp production plants in cement and steel, but this is what's going on. It's going to be what's happening. 10 years, your children will not be building with cement anymore. It's just not going to be happening. And you know what? When you're talking about an earthquake happening, yeah, when you're sucking out the liquid give that the earth's little balancing plate act has by sucking out the oil, which, again, as it's spinning these plates, it's got a little bit of leeway in there by breaking them up and allowing that. But if we suck that out while we strip the earth of its water, the plates, I don't know if you saw the iceberg that's moving into the coast and pushing people's houses over, that's plates starting to shift. It's starting to move everything around underneath so it can hang itself in space. So it can make pipes, too. You can make hemp pipes. They're more breathable. They don't break as much as cement does. Cement, again, man-made. We did it, yay, hey, but Mother Nature gave us the number one from the stars to let us know what to do with everything else around us. So you keep like sucking it out of the middle and saying that you care about what we're building on top, but one way or the other, please, Mother Nature went out because I really don't want to see all that. So your legacy, your children will wear your last name, you know? Enjoy. I still got one minute? There's still some other cool stuff about hemp. The next thing with hemp, as far as, okay.
As long as it's earthquake-related.
It is, it is, it is. The dirt in the ground in between buildings, your vacant lots that you have, that you're going and pulling all the weeds out of. Root systems from plants hold dirt together. They hold dirt to the ground. So if you have all these vacant lots in between and you want funding to come up with ways that's, you have all these initiatives, start planting urban gardens in your vacant lots. Go and get your homeless veterans, allow them to tend to your urban gardens or to pull the weeds in your lot. Reach out to those people and have them prepare the city for a better connected dirt source, if that's what we're all worried about. Again, it's fireproof, rodent-proof, pesticide-proof. It's its own pesticide and herbicide. It does not grow mold, all right? Like, period. It doesn't rot. So I don't know how many more categories you got on your little dollar-dollar checkpoint. But, oh, and it makes fabric so we don't have to like have Bangladeshi cotton kids who making money, too.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, we just found a card for you on 20. Did you? It was misplaced, so please come forward.
It was misplaced because it has a pair of legs on it and was hiding. It happens all the time. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Stay, we agree with this agenda item and stay tuned for rocking the Cosmo under public comment. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Mr. Englander, or Mr. Labange, let's go through how we're going to deal with each one of these issues.
Yeah, like, uh, these representatives of the Department of Building and Safety to the center table, and then we go through them each lead to a direct report. Some I want to have us approve today, has already been stated. And then one issue I do want to send back for more work that's necessary. Ray Chan, please introduce your staff here.
Mr. Chan, good to see you.
And could Luke join the center table? I just want to do this. Luke Zamparini, who's the special deputy for Building and Safety. His father was a Torrance High graduate, member of the 1936 Olympic team, still living in my district, your dad. He's a great resident and a great Olympian. Just wanted to connect his son to us. Ray, please.
Good morning. Actually, it's good afternoon. My name is Ray Chan, interim general manager of Building and Safety. Listening to all the speakers is like walking down the memory lane because during the Northridge earthquake, actually, three of us around this table were highly involved with different aspects of the earthquake. First of all, we all lived in the valley and our houses were damaged. Number two, right after the earthquake, within four hours after the earthquake, Eva Kachefi, Dr. Eva Kachefi and myself, we reported to the damage assessment team and we're responsible for doing damage assessment on multiple city governments' buildings. And then thirdly, we, Dr. Kachefi and myself, and also Mr. Zamparini, get involved with recovery effort by coming up with different plan check and permitting policy to facilitate the rebuild effort. And fourthly, we also work with the Structural Engineer Association to come up with many different structural changes that would make our buildings stronger and safer. I guess right now, I guess Dr. Kachefi is ready to do a little presentation to talk about what we have done briefly after the Northridge earthquake.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you. Good morning, council members. Thank you for the opportunity. I have put a presentation, very brief presentation, together regarding the recovery policy and building code changes after Northridge earthquake. The, 20 years ago, the Northridge earthquake, the, one of the costliest natural disaster in the United States resulted in 57 deaths, 8,700 injured, and over 64,000 buildings were damaged as a result of earthquake that it required repair or reconstruction. The building and safety and the city immediately following the earthquake established earthquake command centers in the metro and Van Nuys offices to help the public in the recovery phase after earthquake. And as Mr. Ray Chan mentioned, members of the department's damage assessment team inspected all the city facility and essential buildings. Also, the department conducted assessment, building inspection for the, and posted signs for the buildings by utilizing over 20,000 emergency staff consisting of engineers and inspectors of the department and also other city departments and government agency and Provide the assessment, initial assessment provided for the buildings were over 94,000. Another effort that department and city did, the, an urgency ordinance was added to the Los Angeles Municipal Code to waive the permit fees. to waive the permit fees to demolish or rebuild or reconstruct buildings damaged as a result of earthquake. And that ordinance was extended twice to January 1999. Another effort from the city was approving an ordinance to allow owners of legally non-conforming buildings to be replaced by the same non-conforming rights they had if the building was damaged or destroyed in the earthquake. The department expedited and plan check services and also inspections related to the earthquake-damaged buildings. We provided many standard plans for the chimney repairs, block walls, and also anchor bolting of the single families to the foundation and foundation repairs. Overall, over 92,000 building permits were issued for repair reconstruction of the damaged building. The joint effort between city and the Structural Engineer Association to study damage of the various type of constructions led to development and implementation of the emergency code changes, retrofit standard, and new code amendments. Those were used later to follow the requirements. This doesn't work. Some of the problems reported as a result of earthquake that it led to the mandatory retrofit ordinances and voluntary retrofit ordinances, I have listed them here. Masonry and tilt-top concrete wall buildings with wood dafragma needed a better connection to hold the buildings together, and we saw many damage in that area. This is a picture example of it. It is a warehouse. It shows the roof of the building collapsed. Roof and wall, they were separated due to the earthquake. This doesn't work. I'm sorry, the pointer doesn't work. Steel moment frame welded joints were found to have fracture fractures in the wells and also in the beam column panel zones. And this, again, led to one of our mandatory ordinances. This shows a picture of the, you know, cracks in many, many buildings we found. Numerous fire were caused by broken gas pipes due to buildings shifting from their foundation or on secured water heaters falling. This was another, this was another cause for a mandatory ordinance. Retrofit ordinances were resulted of the following problems we observed. Stocked drywall construction, wooden panel shear wall not perform as expected. And this shows sample of the pictures. And multi-stoly wood frame buildings, we talk under parking software story, perform poorly and collapse. I have a picture for that to show if it comes, okay? This shows the first story was pancake. Yeah, Northridge Meadow. And also, many residential buildings had severe damage. They separated from their connection to the foundation. It caused failure, damage, and also some death as a result of this. This is a sample.
That gives us an overview, members, that is real key.
And this leads to, led to the code, if code requirements for new building mandatory and retrofit ordinance in city of L.A. and that I have a list of them here. I'll skip few. This shows retrofit program in L.A. as a result of Northridge earthquake. One was earthquake reduction in existing tilt-top concrete walls that impacted 2,638 buildings. It is part of our code now, chapter 91 of the code. Design, this applies to the buildings designed prior to '76 and starting date for this mandatory ordinance is '94. The second is a special provision for repair of welded steel moment frame building in hard, in high earthquake damage area, started '94. I mean, sorry, '95. And the next one, seismic gas shut-off valve, started '95.
And all that is very helpful. And that PowerPoint, I want Ray to make 15 copies for my colleagues. Again, I want you to look at it, put fresh eyes of a deputy in your office so that we could do this. There's much more work to do. I think we want to be able to capture that. And if we have anything else you want to add, Ray, or the engineers?
I think, I think, thank you for the opportunity for us to present this, what we have done after the earthquake. And we hope that we will see you at the symposium, Northridge 20, on Thursday and Friday.
At down at Northridge, Cal State University, Northridge. Members, I'm going to ask that we approve, send 22 back to committee for more work.
Well, you know what, Mr. Labons? Why don't you wait a second? I think I've got everything. I think we have a note from, from your staff. So if I could get your attention and Mr. Englander's attention, make sure I'm right on this. On items 19, 20, and 22, that they will be sent to planning, we're going to vote to approve 23. And item 27 will go back to public safety and budget. Am I correct, Mr. Englander?
Yes, almost. On 27, we're actually going to approve instruction for the CAO to report, and then that report will then go back to those committees.
Okay.
If we could. And with that, I'd like to speak just quickly on 23 and 27. Probably the most important thing we could talk about. We've talked about what happened at the Northridge earthquake. We talked about what has happened over the last 20 years, what the city has done to prepare themselves, our new collaboration and partnership with Dr. Jones and the USGS, our experts, our first responders, our CERT teams. We've talked about a lot of great things that the city has done, that we have repaired, that we've restored and come back to rebuild the infrastructure that crumbled. But there's a lot of things we haven't done, as we've talked about, as well as item 19, 20, 22, 23, and 27. Doing an inventory of those buildings that are most vulnerable is one of the most important things we could possibly do today as policymakers, moving forward and preparing for the next major disaster here in Los Angeles. And doing that, one of the main things that has stopped policy, the key thing that has prevented this body and any other body, quite frankly, including the plan that was, that was presented and passed in San Francisco, lacked one thing. And the one thing it lacked was funding. The ability to help the property owners and give them incentives to invest in retrofitting. When the state legislature in 2010 passed a resolution to take away the disincentive, it was a good first step. The disincentive, which was, if you invested in retrofitting in your building, you wouldn't pay the taxes. Your property value wouldn't go up based on just the retrofitting, that capital improvement. They took that away. What we haven't done is added the incentive. So I am partnering with Adrin Nazarian, Assembly member, who knows this body well, worked under Mr. Kokorian for many years. I think he taught him everything that Adrin knows, but not necessarily everything that Mr. Kokorian knows. But he was definitely a brilliant chief of staff and is a great Assembly member. We're partnering. He's preparing now a spot bill so we can actually create an incentive for property owners to deduct the investment of retrofitting off their taxes. That is key to doing this. We'll be working with BOMA and AGLA, the Building Owners and Managers Association, the Apartment Owners Association. These buildings are most vulnerable. The ones that are most vulnerable happen to also typically be the people that are most vulnerable in society living in them. And so we have to do something to protect that housing stock, to protect that investment. And so we're looking to do that. So I ask for your I-vote on 23, 27, with the CAO recommendation to develop the report and send it back to committee. And thank you. And I want to also thank all of you for listening in and participating today as it was, been very, it's been very critical in this discussion and timely as well. Thank you, Mr. President, for all the time.
Okay, thank you, and I thank Mr. Labons as well. Okay, Madam Clerk, what I'd like to see happen on this, the items that we're sending to committees, I would like to have reports back within 60 days. If there is a problem with that, then they should contact my office. But let's, I want reports back, report backs in 60 days. So let's prepare to do what we need to do. Items 19, 20, and 22 will be referred to planning. So without objection, that'll be the order. Item 23, members, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the... No, no, I'm sorry, Mr. McQuiston. You, when you got up to speak, they gave you four minutes. And, and if you didn't, I'll let, here, come on. But see, that's why you had that extra time. Go right in.
This is on item 23. I wasn't speaking on that before.
No, but we brought all the items together, and that's why you were given the time.
Okay, 23. I'm opposed to 23. The reason is, this is a local problem. And if we can't solve it locally, the city, the state is certainly not going to help us out. They're going to say, you should have fixed your building code before the last earthquake. And I think this is something we can't pass on to the state to help us out. We got to do it ourselves.
Okay, last speaker on this item, Mr. Parks.
Englander talked about disincentives. One that I'd ask you to look into is the city has a disincentive that if you do major rehab on a multi-family building, you only get 50% of that as relates to paying back or passing it through. And so that's a disincentive for people to upgrade multifamily buildings that have propensity to be damaged as well as single family, but they impact far more people. So if you could look at that as you look at 23 and 27.
Okay, can we include that, Mr. Englander? Okay, so on item 23, let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, now, item 27, we need, I think it's been amended, Mitch, and to...
The instruction is simply that we instruct the CAO to report back to the policy committees.
Okay, so then that's what we'll do. Let's, in fact, without objection, that'll be the order. Okay. Oh, we have to? Okay, so let's vote on item 27. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. Before we move on, I'd like to call on a few individuals from general public comment. General public comment has now been put at the end of our agenda, not the beginning. It used to be in the beginning. So if I could get Mr. Robert Portillo and Starr Johnson, and if somebody could find Ms. Diane Lawrence and have her brought in. But, Mr. Portillo, please come on up. General public comment.
All right. Dear Councilman Wesson and members of the city council, my name is Robert Portillo. I am here today representing the 16th Place Neighborhood Association and leaving for you a petition which reads, "During the first week of June 2011, we asked Mayor Garcetti, then council president, for his help regarding the development of Midtown Crossing and CIM, the developer. He suggested that since you are, you were our councilman, Wesson, we should work with you. You have ignored us, and today marks our 50th request for your help. It has come to our attention that CIM, the developer of Midtown Crossing, has failed to obtain 11 signage permits required by building code. Thus, the signage is in noncompliance and flagrantly illegal since July 12, 2013. Importantly, this signage was in violation in early October 2012 during its initial framing construction and when we appealed to you, Councilman Wesson, to investigate. Photos are on page four of the document that's been handed to you. As it is apparent that there has been no proper investigation, we, the undersigned, petition you to investigate these blatant violations. Ensure the law is enforced and remove the illegal signage. This brazen disregard of public decency violates our privacy and derogates our quality of life by pitching commercial propaganda into our homes and neighborhood and breaches the longstanding or long-established good relations between our small community and other businesses nearby who have shown us the respect that is lacking with CIM. The signage advertises directly to, to us, not to the motorists it's designed for. We are affronted by the arrogance in this behavior. Why has Midtown Crossing been allowed to become a public nuisance?"
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ms. Starr Johnson, please come forward. And Ms. Diane Lawrence, please enter the chambers.
Yes, it would be nice. My name is Starr Johnson. I am the former president of the 16th Place Neighborhood Association. We have been, the signs have been grossly, I don't care which side of the street you live on, if you live right across the street, right at your backyard, or if you have to see your view between houses. I was picking up signatures for that petition. I looked out, neighbor's house, looked out in between two houses. All I saw was Galaxy sign, and that's all I could see. And it was even above the height of the building. So the height of the building is bad enough. And now to go about, you know, another foot above it is even ridiculous. And it's all the same sign, and it is, I've talked to the people at AT&amp;T, and they were very upset with the signage because it all says sprint. And the solution for SIM was a sign about that high and about that wide, above and below on each one, which is read at about that same height. Who can read a sign that size from the street or anywhere else in another? Oh, yeah, this stuff's available at AT&amp;T as well. But it's just a blatant disregard for the businesses that are there, and we would like to have them removed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So what we'll do, I'll hold Mrs. Lawrence's card, and when she comes back, when we begin general public comment, we'll take it up. So now we're going to move, I believe, is it to Madam Clerk? Is it item 16 or...?
Yes, item 16. Call special for cards.
Item 16. Well, let's call 18 now. We'll go back to 16. Mr. Walsh and Mr. Akala's out of time, though, right? Oh, no. You have one minute. So Juan Akala, please come forward. Come, come, come on. Wait, what now?
I thought you called Mr. Walsh.
Now, that's what I thought. They're telling me, Mr. Akala, that you're out of time. Mr. Walsh has a minute. So, Mr. Walsh, come forward, please.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. When I get up here, I'm always talking to everybody. And this is about weed and bush abatement. Now, you who live in neighborhoods in the hills know this is absolutely ridiculous. They hold you responsible for, for cleaning your bush, cleaning out bushes. It costs thousands of dollars to have this done in some cases. You shouldn't have to pay for it. The city should have to pay for it. I don't have to clean in front of my house as a renter. Why should you have to do this? And there's fire hazard. It is the job of the city. In many other cities, the bush abatement and weed abatement is handled by the city, not in this city, not in the city in decline. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's prepare to vote on this issue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's go now to item 21, which is... Sean, are you still here? Sean Murphy, come forward. Well, Mr. Murphy passes. Mr. Akala's out of time. Mr. Walsh, or is, no, Mr. Walsh is out of time. So let's prepare to vote on this item. There are no speakers in the queue. Let's open the roll. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now we'll move to item thirty-three. Mr. Ocala's out of time, Mr. Walsh is out of time on item thirty-three. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now we'll move to item eighteen. Uh, Mr. Walsh, Stephen Lamson, Daniel Ramirez, Craig, and, gosh, I, I don't know about the la, the other name, Washington, K.N.K. Washington, and, uh, Mr. Ocala's out of time. Yes, sir. Just identify yourself and speak.
I'm Stephen Sereniano-Lamson, the president of the Kenny Washington Stadium Foundation. Lady and gentlemen, today, your motion on creating Kenny Washington Square will forever bond Kenny's legacy with his roots in Lincoln Heights. And this historic vote will be heard throughout Los Angeles and across the country, and we hope all the way to Canton, Ohio. On behalf of the Kenny Washington Stadium Foundation, the Lincoln Heights community, and generations of Lincoln High School varsity athletes, a most profound thank you to our Councilman Gilbert Sadio for his leadership on completing this seven-and-a-half-year odyssey. Thank you also to Councilmembers Price and Labange for seconding this motion. Today, you recognize a man who was the first African-American to sign a contract in the modern NFL, and showed courage in the face of prejudice, dignity under duress, and the resolve needed to open doors for others to follow. Kenny Washington was a Lincoln High School hero, a UCLA Bruin legend, and a pioneer in the integration of the National Football League. He was UCLA's first football American selection, and the first Bruin to have his jersey permanently retired. He was also a 1940 College All-Star selection, and later an inductee in the College Football Hall of Fame. Yet despite a stellar career at UCLA that led to many believing he was the best college player in the country in 1939, he was not eligible for the NFL simply because of the color of his skin. His seven years of perseverance finally allowed him to reach the pinnacle of his professional career, and take the field at the Coliseum as a member of the Los Angeles Rams on August 29, 1946. For those of us who grew up in Lincoln Heights, and heard the stories of Kenny as a Tiger, from all the old folks that have since been gone, nothing validates those old community stories more than what's on the back of his 1948 football card that says, "Considered by many as the greatest high school player in Southern California history." Thank you very much.
No, thank you, sir. Mr. Ramirez, please come forward, followed by the Washingtons.
My name's Daniel Ramirez. I'm here to speak about Kenny Washington and his importance to the community of Lincoln Heights. I was a student and an athlete at Lincoln High School, and in that time, Kenny Washington was always on our campus. When I played football, he was always on our bench. He was very important, not only to the Lincoln High School, but to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, please, come forward.
Good afternoon, my name is Kisa Washington, and this is my brother, Craig Washington. We do have another brother, Kirk Washington, he was unable to make it, but on behalf of the Washington family, we'd like to thank the council, as well as Councilman Asadello, Asadio, excuse me, and the Kenny Washington Stadium Foundation for all the work and all the effort that they've put in to recognize my grandfather's achievements, as well as to keep his name alive, and to educate those of us who are not around to be able to even meet him, or to watch him, or to experience his greatness on the field, as well as in the community. We've been blessed to hear many great things about my grandfather, but as the next, I should say, the third generation, we would like to be able to let his legacy live on, to see a marker in the city that he loved so much, and that has, has been so good to our family. And so on behalf of our foundation, as well as our family, we would like to thank the council today for considering this motion.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sadio, and, and I'm sure you've been called worse than, we, we are all, and, and look at me, I could not pronounce your first name, so things, things happen, don't feel bad. Thank you all so much for taking time to come down. Mr. Sadio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kenny Washington, our Jackie Robinson of our neighborhood, a really incredible champion. You know, at Roosevelt, I played against Lincoln. I mentioned that at one of our ceremonies, and got booed by everybody in the stadium. Kenny Washington is a hero, and it's amazing to see that as the community changes, the demographics change, the whole nature of the community changes, he remains the hero of that community. Everybody's so proud of him. He went from being City Player of the Year, which is an extraordinary feat in itself, on to becoming a Bruin, an All-American, side by side with Jackie Robinson, multi-sport hero. And then with dignity and great patience, like this morning, he waited for his opportunity to become a star in the NFL. We should recognize that. Not only did he become a star in the NFL, but like so many others, returned to the city he loved, and became a member chief of the LAPD. One of the early African-Americans in the department, set himself there as a great role model. He is a great Angelino. And so for that, we are creating the square, but we're going to go beyond that. We're creating the square over on North Broadway and Lincoln Park. But at the same time, we want to build the stadium, and we just want to create that continuity in this great city of so many people who come here, we have to remember our history. We have to remember those who came first, and we have to have that thread of this great community, of where so many people have come from all over the world, to live cooperatively with peace and respect and dignity. We want to continue to do that by honoring the great heroic efforts, both in sports, but mostly important in our, in our society, of the great Kenny Washington. So I ask all my colleagues to please join me on this vote.
Thank you, thank you all. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, that passes. Congratulations to you all. Mr. Labange.
Shout out to the Northern League Lincoln Tigers, Kenny Washington, another shout out for the Tigers.
Okay, and now we, Madam Clerk, I'm going to go back to general public comment, and I'm going to call Ms. Lawrence. Diane Lawrence, if, if you please come forward, and...
Thank you, Council President Wesson. I am the editor of the Neighborhood News, a 14,000 copy, 32-page community magazine, distributed for free within a territory in Council District 10. We have been in business for five years. Through my relationship with local businesses, residents, and local community groups, I have a good sense of my community's concerns. I'm here to express the frustration many, not all, but many, experience with our city council representation. Unanswered phone calls, emails ignored, small businesses struggling with no help or apparent interest from our council office. We continue to report on the Sixteenth Place effort to have the council office assist them, assist them for the last year, and over forty-nine, fifty emails unanswered, and we're at a loss to understand their refusal, CD10's refusal, to follow up on promises made, or respond to this, these community concerns. It would be really wonderful if we had our council representation really come into our community and find out what is needed, although it's getting a little late in the game. All right, thank you.
Okay, we have other comment here. We have Sean Murphy. Sean, jump up here real quick.
Good afternoon. Yeah, I'm looking at my watch, it's afternoon now. I want to wish Michelle Obama a happy 50th birthday on Friday. Hope she has a good one. Justice was not served in Orange County yesterday. I'm sure everybody knows it. I'm angry with the, what those officers did. They're going to pay one of these days by, by God. I hope their bank accounts gets, get, gets emptied.
Wanacala.
Topic of LA Weekly, LA Weekly, I want an interview. The rent is too damn high. When are we going to understand that human beings need a place to live? Developers, all you do is do development to make money. Humans need a place to live. See here? The rent is too damn high. Who said that a human being was born just to pay rent all his life? Who the hell came up with that concept? It came straight out of hell, I'm sure, because it sure didn't come from heaven, even though both ideas are totally stupid, because human beings are what do everything. It isn't heaven, it isn't hell, it's us. We are the stupid, greedy idiots that keep each other homeless. You don't see a wolf not letting another wolf share a cave unless he's the alpha male. Anyway, you don't see birds telling each other, "Get out of my tree," you know? It's only humans that are so damn stupid. You cannot live in Beverly Hills because you ain't got the stature. Statue, stature, whatever. You don't have the money, baby. Get the hell out of my neighborhood. Labange, I don't think I'm going to allow you in my neighborhood.
This, this is regards to earthquake. If you can, YouTube Professor Sergey Pullanets, are earthquakes foreseeable? Now, this details, Professor Sergey Pullanets of the Institute of Applied Geophysics in Moscow presents the evidence that not only can mankind predict earthquakes and related natural disasters, but in fact, we have the power to change the weather to suit our needs. Now, in related, today I received this email from GovTrek.us, House Resolution, H.R. 3857, to authorize the House Representatives and the Senate to bring enaction, seeking declaratory and injunctive relief in response to the failure of the President to meet the requirement of the Constitution to faithfully execute the law and for other purposes. Now, I guess the national legislators have the idea that they cannot legislate laws when you have a President who violates it constantly. This is a change that I've been discussing. The state legislators are now moving to bring back the laws of the Supreme Law of the United States. Everybody who is in office, everyone who listens, if they want to be citizens, they have to get real. We all have to be real now. We face threats, galactic asteroids and everything else. We need, again, I emphasize, helium three on the moon, thermonuclear fusion, that's the future.
Barry Johnson, Studio City.
Barry Johnson, Studio City stakeholder. I just wanted to say that Studio City is proud to have the historic Campo de Colanga within its borders, Studio City 91604. And I'd like to thank Councilman Krikorian, who on Sunday at the annual commemoration event, set the record straight, stating that the Campo property is in Studio City 91604, and that the Campo building is in Council District 2. Thank you.
Well, I think it's in my district, but we'll argue it later. I did make a shout out to salute, for the record, Madam Clerk, because everybody was asking me that the Campo is in my district with the parking lots in Paul's, but I'll stand corrected if it's such. Doesn't matter, there's no borders, there's one California, that's the key. Let me have John Walsh. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You can't see my face, it's a long shot. The director's been told not to show my Jew face on, on television. Murder on the red line, I'm telling you, it's out of control on the red line. I ride it all the time because you canceled my bus service. Bleed to death, slit its throat. 2020 Cantor Commission, they really spanked your butts here. They should have done it harder, but they did spank your butts here. And Mickey Cantor said, "There's a website." Where's the website? All the Cantor Commission does is elites talking to elites. They don't want to hold a town hall where we can get up and tell Mickey Cantor what's really going on in this city. I want to point out, I believe it is in your district, across the street from where I am, on the corner of Yucca and Argyle, there is a 10-story building, that's the northeast corner of Yucca and Argyle. When you're going to the, see, now they give me a picture of my Jew face when I ask for it. Okay, now, funny I don't look Jewish. What's happening at Yucca and Argyle, the 10-story glass building, it is covered with gang graffiti. I want to send a message, and this is in your district, Mr. Labange, to all the gangs. If you want a place in Hollywood to set up, to do your business, come to the northeast corner of Yucca and Argyle, the City Council, the LAPD, no one will do anything, it's covered with graffiti, you can see it. That's why I'm asking you now. Every single criminal, come to my neighborhood, you will never be arrested as long as you pay off the cops. Town hall meeting, we wanted? Yesterday, we got a, somebody from Nepal came to our website, HollywoodHighlands.org.
The other day, Friday, I was trying to make a comment about the Cantor Commission, and the, about 34 seconds into my comments, because I suggested the City Council should all tender their resignations, and resign as a possible solution to the city's problems, I was carted away, nearly arrested. What does this show? Well, it shows two things. First, nobody here gets represented unless you're a major campaign donor. The second thing it represents is that we've become a city that's dysfunctional. We have 417 square miles in the city, made up of 15 congressional districts, to 15 council districts that are the size, or bigger than many congressional districts in this country. Now, what does that do? That puts too much power in too few hands, and it makes the ability to buy elections that much simpler. What Mickey Cantor needs to do in his commission, and what needs to be done immediately, is to divide this city up into three new cities. The San Fernando Valley needs to be one city, San Pedro needs to be a second city, and Venice should join Marina Del Rey and become a third city. What'll be left is what you have here, downtown, south central, and all of these areas in Hollywood, where they're building these projects on earthquake faults. You will release the homeowners in the valley from the economic slavery of transferring 90% of their tax dollars and getting 10% of their services back. That's what the first thing needs to be done. Please do that.
Donna Paramon, is Donna still here?
Yeah. I even woke up after a long speech. Anyway, Miriam can't be here because she has laryngitis and asthma. Anyway, she would like to be here. I want to know if the metro is privately owned, and why are they allowed to increase taxes? Anyway... Anyway, they call it the Northridge Reseda, call it the Northridge quake, but you really should call it the Northridge Reseda quake. It was also actually felt in, we had three, we had Northridge, San Fernando, and Santa Monica. Anyway, I, we need, I want to speak on top to Miriam to say, and myself, we need to bring back the Van Nuys video conferencing. No more four hours to and fro, to speak for two to seven minutes and stay here for hours. It's not about money, it's about silencing the people. Our City Council members have gotten a huge raise recently, even those who have just got elected, a huge raise, not like our little 1% raise. Certainly, they could use that money to bring back our video conferencing and bring back the people's right to choose. And as a matter of fact, I'd like to have, maybe one of them could donate his raise to, so we can bring in the Van Nuys video conferencing. Our city is, in the meantime, our cities are, it's falling apart, our buses are not reliable, especially in the San Fernando Valley, and neither reason why we need have video conferencing. And also, in that case, if we don't, we would, I think the valley should seriously think about succeeding again, succeeding at, I meant, this time. Silent, you want to silence voices in the valley to speak, so we can't speak about the local buses. Corettes keep on, and he keeps on coming with excuses, "We're not going to Van Nuys Neighborhood Council." Anyway, bring back the video conferencing.
Paul Rubio.
Hello, City Council, I'd like to have William speak first, and then I'll go after.
Thank you, Tom. Did you call my name earlier?
I will call it now, but Paul gave you your time. Paul, we thank you for your brief comments. State your name, sir.
William Rodriguez Morrison, California GOP.
Morrison, you got it, we're moving.
Okay, California GOP State Chairman. I'm actually here to speak on the Statue of Freedom. Actually, you should have one of these copies on your desk. Not too sure if you got one of these. Actually, we're just asking for a letter of support for this project. It's actually a statue, supposed to be built in CD1, 520 feet tall. It's actually going to be built by private investors with no cost to the city, which will bring more revenue to the city and more jobs. So that's what we're asking, just for a letter of support on that. Thank you.
Stephen, I want to say it correctly, the Statue of Freedom. Stephen, you want to say something or just wave?
I'll say something briefly.
Real quick. Thank you, Stephen.
My name is Stefan Wannigatunga, I'm in Angelino from Anchorage, Alaska, and I'm a film director here. I wanted to share with you my support for the Statue of Freedom and also how much of an honor and privilege it is to be with you all here today. Thank you so much for your time, and I'll see you again soon. Thank you, Honorable Counselman.
Robinus Catalysts. Catalysts, no Robinus catalysts. Last card, Richard Robertson.
Mr. President, members, God is not homophobic. Sir, Jesus said, "Pick up your cross and follow Me." When He reformed the old law, and don't forget, He was a rabbi. He rescinded some of the Old Testament, by and print, and saved human from enslavement. He gave us the New Testament, life. Peeking through keyholes into the bedroom has been the hang-up of little minds for millennia, especially the bedrooms of politicians. The Machiavellian accompanies the sycophant, the parvino peeking through the door. When I was a child, my younger sister's lesbian lover committed suicide in the 50s during the Eisenhower administration. It was a tragedy in our family I'll never forget. Back then, it was legal to kill homosexuals. In the state of Michigan, a person could be murdered, could be executed because of his homosexuality, or hers. If there is anything that can defend marriage, it's the right of gay and lesbians to marry. Modern marriage has become a sham. By getting rid of the false dependencies, me Tarzan, you Jane, we bring sanity to marriage by allowing gay marriage.
All right, Mr. Robinson, thank you. That completes the public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, there's a request for Adam 30 to go forth with.
Absolutely. And 21. Thank you, Mr. Sidya, and your fine staff.
Council has motions for, Council has motions for postponing referral.
So ordered. Any announcements, members? Announcements, Mr. Felipe Fuente.
Announcements, and one adjourned in memory. I just want to remind my colleagues that there is a red flag advisory happening, probably until about Thursday. So constituents across the city of Los Angeles, in particular, the San Fernando Valley ought to have a plan and make sure that they are talking to their families, having a plan, being mindful of their activities today. I want to thank Councilmember Englander, helps us understand how important it is to be prepared. And today, Mr. Labanche, you did a great job helping us understand what it is to be prepared as well. And Mr. O'Farrell, for some reason, was mentioned as well. So be prepared, and red flag advisory likely through Thursday.
And that includes all of the San Fernando Valley and also the rim of the valley, including the Santa Monica Mountains, Glassell Park, and Eagle Rock area in Pasadena as well. Thank you so much. Any other announcements? Are we going to all rise for adjourned motions, please? Mr. Englander.
Thank you very much. It's fitting, but incredibly unfortunate, that I report the passing early yesterday morning of Tony Willis, one of the longest-serving CERT Valley community leaders, died yesterday of a heart attack. Tony was very active in LA CERT, since he would have been here today, without question. Since the beginning and for the last several years with the county CERT program, Tony led many CERT trainings and visited countless neighborhood councils, community groups, bringing awareness to the value of community preparedness. Tony organized many community events, and it was always easy to locate his vehicle at a drill or at a response because it was the one loaded to the top with supplies for first responders in the community. He loaded everything on top of his car and just went. In 2004, Tony's CERT team, called the Green Hornets, won the Business and Industry Council for Emergency Planning Preparedness Emergency Response Team Challenge. That's the B-I-C-E-P-P. The teams competed against each other in a demonstration of their abilities to respond to multiple categories of emergencies, including fire, triage, medical treatment, search and radio communication, and documentation. Tony's contribution to the city of Los Angeles is immeasurable and will be missed by all for his leadership courage and commitment to the emergency preparedness, and our condolences to his wife, Terri Lynn, as well. Thank you. We had a moment of silence outside, we brought all the CERT team members out for a photo on the steps and talked a little bit about Tony and what he's been able to do for the program. And so I opened with, "It was fitting, but unfortunate, and I know he was with us here today."
Thank you, best member, Tony. Felipe Fuente.
Thank you, Mr. Labanche. I'd like the Council to adjourn today in the memory of Uriel Maria Isabel and Alejandro Estrada. You may have read about or saw on television yesterday a terrible tragedy that took place in my council district. This family of four unfortunately was trapped inside their home during a fire that raged early yesterday morning around 4:30 a.m. They succumbed to their injuries throughout the day. They fought valiantly through most of the day, and the mother and the father and the children, 12 and 7, passed yesterday. Maria's brother described his sister, who worked locally there in Silmar for a technology company manufacturer, as a woman who would work overtime and do anything to help her family. Others described Uriel, a former Marine who died yesterday on his birthday, as a good man and a father, and one of those dads that everybody wished that they had. Terrible tragedy, more details are coming forward as we find out about the circumstances involving the, around the fire. A fund has been set up to help with donations, to defray the costs, to help with the costs of the Estrada's family's funeral. Members, I'll be asking all of you for your help on this. It's a terrible tragedy, would appreciate your prayers for this beautiful family. Thank you.
Mr. Boozgaiño.
Thank you. Colleagues, it's with a heavy heart that I ask that we adjourn in memory of San Pedro's strongest boy, Jacob Wayne, four and a half months old, who passed away from ATRT cancer in the early hours of January 3rd. During his four and a half months here on Earth, he touched many, many lives and was loved deeply by his family and friends. His life was a brief gift to us that will live forever in our hearts. Jacob's life was celebrated by many at the first Strikeout Cancer Softball Tournament fundraiser at Blockfield in San Pedro earlier this month. Funeral services were held yesterday at Mary Star of the Sea Church. He is survived by his mother Haley Wayne, grandparents Sean and Lisa Stafford, and uncles Cole and Eric Stafford. Jacob, may you rest in eternal peace. This baby brought so many people together in our San Pedro community, and he touched so many, he will be missed. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I have three adjourned motions. First, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Lofton Mason Jr., who was born in 1932, passed away December 2013. He grew up in a Christian home and was united in his church at Orange Hill Missionary Baptist Church in Bolton, Mississippi. He was raised in the Orange Hill community of Bolton, where he attended Orange Hill and Robertson Smith Public School. In the early 50s, he moved to Chicago, Illinois. He was drafted in US Army and decorated veteran in the Korean conflict. He served the Korean service, he received the Korean Service Medal, United Nations Service Medal, the National Defense Service Medal, and the President Unit Citation. After serving in the Army in '56, he relocated in Los Angeles, where he continued his education at Manual Arts High School and later LA Trade Tech. He was employed for the County of Los Angeles for over 35 years. He struggled personally and eventually became the first African-American sheet metal worker in the county. He spent several years working in King Drew Medical Center. He was especially proud of the perimeter fence he built at King Drew, which remains standing today. Lofton met his wife Beatrice in Edwards, Mississippi, and later were married in Long Beach, California. This union produced five children. Lofton enjoyed hunting, reading, and a variety of family events. After relocating and establishing his pathway to success, he assisted several of his siblings to enter their pathway to Los Angeles. He also established the first African-American-owned container freight station in the city of Inglewood. He is survived by his wife Beatrice and four beloved children, ten loving grandchildren, and a host of family and friends. The next two are prior, are former city employees. As to adjourn in memory of Stephen Steve Wong, former executive officer of the CLA's office, assistant city administrator in the CAO's office, and also a public police administrator in LAPD. He was born in 1944, passed away December 2013. He was a dedicated and respected city employee known for his brilliant mind, incredible work ethic, tremendous sense of wit. He retired from city service in '98 after a long and distinguished career with the city. Most notably, Steve was the council advisor on budgetary matters and led the city's effort in bringing Staples Center to LA. He is survived by his son Garrett, his mother Pearl, his brother Ron, and sister Judy and Glenda. He has joined his wife Margaret, daughter Kristen, father Tommy, and his brother Wally. Services were held January the 4th at Forest Lawn. He was missed by his friends, family, and city staff. And the last one, as to adjourn in memory of Marshal L. Anderson, retired deputy chief LAPD, who was born in Buffalo, New York in 1928, passed away December 2013 at the age of 85. He's a deputy chief with LAPD, broke ranks in 1979 by criticizing the department in the much, infamous Yula Love shooting. Andy, as he was called, was in charge of five South LA Police Divisions in '79, when two officers under his command shot Yula Love, an African-American woman, who had threatened them with a knife during a dispute over an unpaid $22 gas bill. A love died from multiple gunshots, at least one of which hit her after she had fallen to the ground. Chief Gates defended the officers, saying they had fired in self-defense. His assessment, the shooting was later validated by the Police Commission, which had previously played little, if any, role in the investigation involved shootings. The Commission found that the 39-year-old Love had been shot, I'm sorry, after Love's death, the Commission began a review of all police shootings to determine if the use of force was justified. The Commission later found that the 39-year-old Love had been shot unnecessarily, a conclusion Anderson had reached as one of three members of the Shooting Review Board. He was the only member to take that issue on officers' conduct. Noting that the officers had fired in excess of 12 shots in rapid succession, Anderson to sell the officers' attempt to justify their actions by later claiming that they had feared Love would harm her two children who were at home at the time. The other two commanders on the review board said that the officers had handled the situation appropriately, and their response did not merit any disciplinary action. Gates backed that position. The black community was outraged by the shooting and the department ruling that it had been in policy. Protesters marched on Parker Center. Under the pressure from the community, the Police Commission conducted its own month-long investigation and found serious errors in judgment and tactics, including the officers' decision to draw their weapons, and on Love, before all reasonable alternatives were exhausted. After the shooting, the Commission expanded the public reporting of police shootings, including releasing the names of officers involved in such incidents. This practice ended in 2006, when the Commission acted on legal advice, voted to again withhold officers' name. In 1979, then Police Commission President Samuel Williams praised Anderson for his courage to state his opinion. Gates appeared to echo Williams's view, calling Anderson a, quote, "damn good chief," after reporters asked if the commander's candor would affect his career. Anderson left the department a year later after 28 years on the force. He attended night school at North Hollywood High School, earned a football scholarship to Rutgers, but then later entered the Navy. After completing his military service in '46, he studied at USC. He later received a master's degree at Pepperdine University. He joined LAPD in 1950, worked in traffic, juvenile, and vice. By 1967, he was a lieutenant and one of the department's first community relations officers. After leaving the department in 1980, he headed the city's Housing Authority Police and helped manage security at a number of venues during the '84 Olympics. He survived by his wife, a 40-years-old Patricia, and their four children.
Yes, and finally, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, I'd like you to join me in marking a sad passing, but also in celebrating an amazing love story and a life incredibly well-lived. And I ask that we adjourn in memory of Carrie Fidelia Duron Aldrete, who died in December at the age of 93. Ms. Aldrete came to Los Angeles in 19, I'm sorry, she was born in 1920 in Florence, Arizona, to Ramon and Refugia Duron, which was one of six children, and came to Los Angeles, really part of the last century, and met and fell in love with and married her husband of 69 years, who is with us here today, Herbert Aldrete. And the happy couple were blessed with a son, Ruben Aldrete, who's also here, as well as a daughter, Rita Villa. Now, I didn't have an opportunity to know Ms. Aldrete personally, but I do know her daughter, Rita, who's a dear friend and one of the most involved... And I know that that comes from the inspiration that she got from her mom and dad, so by knowing Rita, I feel as though I knew Ms. Aldrete as well. Ms. Aldrete graduated from Roosevelt High School in 1939, and she was always proud to be a Rough Rider. In 1944, in the midst of World War II, she married Herbert, who was then serving our country in the United States Army. And because of the exigencies of war, her stepmother Teresa had to help her arrange everything for the marriage in just two days, so that they could get married while Herbert was here on furlough. And in a great old LA story, her dad, Ramon, treated the newlyweds to a wedding meal at Clifton's Cafeteria, Mr. Labonge, after the ceremony. She was a woman of tremendous faith and was a 63-year member of Saint Alfonso's Catholic Church. She lived a life full of faith, love, family, and friends, and enjoyed many adventures and travels throughout her life. She'll be greatly missed by her family and the many, many friends that she touched through the course of her long and active life well-lived. Ms. Aldrete is survived by, in addition to her husband of 69 years, Herbert and her son, Ruben, Ruben's wife Trish, Rita Villa and her husband John Pooley, her two brothers, Henry and Gilbert Duron, a sister, Rose Lopez, a stepsister, Irene Bursiaga, and 10 grandchildren and 13 great-grandchildren. A wonderful life that came to an end in December 2013. I ask that we adjourn her memory.
Absolutely, such a wonderful articulation, a beautiful life. Members, let's remember those who went before us, continue to serve the city well, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.